Good morning, everyone. This is the two-minute warning. Good morning, everyone, and welcome. And I'm going to call the meeting to order, and we'll do roll call. All the members of council are here and present. And our first order of business is we have some long service employee and Employee Excellence Award to present. So we'll be doing that right from the beginning, and then we'll carry on with the rest of the meeting.
Okay, good morning, everyone, mayor and council and staff. It's great to see the great staff turnout today to celebrate our colleagues. Before I start the presentation, just I'll tell you a little bit about the purpose of these awards for those of you that are new and new to council. The purpose is just to formally recognize staff for their career milestones and to celebrate them with their colleagues. And the Employee Excellence Award is selected staff nominate other staff for the award, and the selection is made by the C A O to recognize excellence in service. So I'll start this morning with our five-year service awards. So our first recipient is Scott McKay, Manager of Revenue. I also ask staff to send in a few words that they think describes the recipient. So the words staff put forward to recognize Scott, Scott's dedicated, he has a positive attitude, he's inclusive, he's always smiling, he's approachable, he's customer-focused, and inquisitive. Congratulations, Scott. The next recipient of our five-year service award is Chloe Austin. I don't know if Chloe made it. Oh, she did. Oh, it was baby. Congratulations, Chloe. So the words staff sent in for Chloe were Chloe's a great mom, she strives to learn, she's always willing to help, she's creative, she's diligent, she's friendly, and she's very kind-hearted. Congratulations, Chloe. Our next recipient is Dylan Dolphany. Dylan's a building official. The words staff used to describe Dylan were authentic, diligent, straightforward, always willing to help, dedicated, helpful, and he provides great customer service. Congratulations, Dylan. Next is Greg Byer, Director of Finance, five years of service. The words submitted for Greg for him are nicest, he's the nicest person, he's supportive, he sets a standard of excellence, he's an advocate, has a great sense of humor, he's approachable and always willing to help. Congratulations, Greg. And the final recipient for our five years of service is Kevin Wheaton, Financial Analyst. It doesn't look like Kevin is here today, but I will still read the words everyone sent in for Kevin. Kevin's patient, knowledgeable, detailed, meticulous, dependable, focused, and friendly. So congratulations to Kevin. Now we're going to move forward to 10 years of service. The first person, 10 years of service, is Susan Gray. Susan's our Revenue Assistant. So Susan's colleagues said she's a helper, she's welcoming, she's fair and unbiased, she's thorough, she's friendly, well-organized, and helpful. Thanks, Susan. Congratulations. Our next recipient for 10 years of service is Yanni Postima, our Municipal Clerk. Yanni is organized, she's a wonderful human, she's kind, she's dedicated, she's a great proofreader, a fountain of knowledge and very patient. Congratulations, Yanni. Our next recipient is Sean Veltoven. Sean's our Facilities Coordinator. Sean is described as kind, easygoing, organized, professional, hardworking, cool as a cucumber, and helpful. We're going to move on to 15 years of service, and our one and only recipient for 15 years of service is Mandy Burgess. Mandy's the Manager of Development. Mandy's colleagues described her as a great mentor, experienced, patient, generally a nice person, extremely knowledgeable, supportive, and confident and cool as a cucumber. Now on to 20 years of service. So we have two recipients for 20 years of service. And our first recipient is Ken Tario. Ken is our Database Administrator and Developer. Words used to describe Ken by his colleagues were efficient, knowledgeable, hardworking, focused, friendly, and patient. Congratulations, Ken. And last but not least, our final recipient for years of service is Charlie Crocker, our Building Official. Charlie is described as experienced, hardworking, dedicated, kind, thoughtful, extremely knowledgeable, and calm. Congratulations, Charlie. We're going to move on to our Excellence in Public Service Award. So this award has many different categories. They're here on the screen. That nominations have to satisfy one or more of these bullet points. So extraordinary effort in continuous excellence, high degree of customer service, outstanding professionalism or competence, consistent and outstanding performance at work, implementation of innovative and practical new work methods, programs, or cost-saving solutions, heroism in response to an emergency situation, exceptional community volunteerism, or a significant contribution to health and safety. So this year's recipient, and Paula's going to come up after I read her nomination, Paula DeLorey, our Municipal Tax Clerk. So Paula's nomination reads, Paula has been employed with the municipality of the County of Kings for more than 29 years, making her one of the longest-serving employees of the municipality. To many community partners, she is a familiar voice that they depend on. Banks, lawyers, insurance firms, and others often reach out to Paula to get information they need. As a longtime member of the Association of Municipal Tax Collectors, peers at other municipalities lean on her for her experience as well, as well as her influence is much far-reaching, as not many are aware. Within the municipal buildings, she's quite often referred to as the municipal archivist, based on the knowledge she holds. She shares not only within the written finance department her knowledge, but across the entire organization. She has also been the main driver behind the Social Committee for over 20 years, playing a key role in many non-work activities that staff have enjoyed over the years, and she's even taught staff a crochet class. Paula is always willing to help with her colleagues and especially enjoys the challenge. Paula has seen much change over the years at the municipality and has helped the finance team to adapt on many occasions, often unexpectedly. She played a key role for the municipality in getting through our 2023 cyber attack. Congratulations, Paula, on your Excellence in Public Service Award. This concludes my presentation. I'd like to congratulate all the staff today for their awards and wish everybody a happy holiday season. And could the award winners please meet Ashley in the lobby for a group photo? Thanks.
Just one quick comment I'd like to make. I've only been here a short time as your mayor and council, but I'm sure I can speak on behalf of council, and I know for myself, the most impressive thing that I've seen since I've been here in this first month is the dedication and capable staff that Kings County has, and we're so very, very fortunate to have you. And along with what Kathy just said, I want to wish you all a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. At this time, I'd like to note that we will be having a special council meeting following this committee of the hall to deal with some time-sensitive matters. So at this time, I would ask the member of council to make a motion to approve the agenda, please. Moved by Counselor Lutz, seconded by Counselor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please push your button. Okay, motion approved. At this time, I would ask if there's any member of council that would like to declare a conflict of interest related to any of the agenda items, please do so now. Okay, we shall move on to a motion to approve the minutes of November the 14th of 2024. We have moved by Counselor Gates, seconded by Counselor McPherson. All those in favor or against, please press your button. And now I would look for a motion to approve the minutes of November the 19th. Moved by Counselor Best, seconded by Counselor Allen. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. Is there any business arising from the November the 14th minutes? Seeing none. Is there any business arising from the November the 19th minutes? Okay, we'll move on to number six, Human Resources. Kathy Nichols, HR Manager, will be providing a presentation. We've already done that. That was at the beginning. So we'll move on to number seven. She had me fooled. I asked her earlier, and she said right at the beginning. Okay, number seven, Grant Thornton, Municipal Auditor, will presenting the 2023-24 Consolidated and Nonconsolidated Financial Statements.
Good morning, everybody. Am I on?
You're on. You were. Would you back on?
So, thanks, Dave. Mayor.
No problem.
So I know a number of you in the room, but for those that I haven't yet had an opportunity to meet, I'm Jessica Clahane. I'm the Audit Partner for the Engagement for the Municipal of Kings. I've been a partner with Grant Thornton and Kentful for three years, but I've been with the firm there for 15 and have had a longstanding relationship working with the county here. Joining me is my colleague, Victoria Els. She's our Senior Manager on the Engagement. And likewise, Victoria's been with us for five or six, six years now, yeah, and has been the Senior Manager on your engagement here as well. So there's a lot of good continuity on our team in terms of working with the municipality. I'm going to go through the financial statements at a very high level of detail. We spent a good amount of time with your Audit Committee last week and went through a lot of the details of the financial statements. However, if you have any questions as we move along, certainly there'll be some opportunities to ask those questions. So I'm going to start here on the Consolidated Statement of Operations. For those new to the room, it's important to understand that these are the consolidated financial statements for the municipality. So it includes the operations of both the municipality and its consolidated subsidiaries, which would be the Kings Rehab Facility, Kings Transit Authority, the Valley RIN. I should know this off the top of my head, but I've just slipped on it for a second here. The Valley Community Fiber Network, and Valley Regional Waste. So that is outlined in Note 1 of the financial statements. So what you will see here is that a number of the items may relate to some of those consolidated subsidiaries. There are also nonconsolidated financial statements for the municipality that are prepared by your management team. However, those are only subject to audit to the extent that they're consolidated into these financial statements, so they don't have a standalone audit opinion, but have been subjected to audit procedures. So as a consolidated entity, the municipality had total revenue of $92,752,000 versus a budget of $91,495,000, and previous year of $87,099,000. The most significant increase in your revenue sources was expected, and that is the increase in property taxes, which is primarily a result of the increased assessment values. Your total expenditures for the year were $83,100,000 versus a budget of $81,968,000, and prior year of $82,559,000, so fairly consistent in the overall operating expenditures for the consolidated entity. So we've ended our year with a surplus of $9,751,000 versus our budgeted $9,526,000. We add that surplus to the accumulated surplus at the beginning of the year of $99,598,000. So we've ended the year with an accumulated surplus of $109,349,000. Any questions on the Statement of Operations before I move along?
Oh, guess not, Jessica. Thank you.
So move along now to your Statement of Financial Position. So we had total financial assets at the end of the year of $81,163,000 versus the previous year of $70,506,000. You'll see that some of the increases there relate to cash and cash equivalents, and tax receivables is largely just a timing-related item. Our total liabilities for the year were $52,819,000 versus the previous year, $44,080,000. The most significant increase there would relate to deferred revenue, and that would just be some of your Build Canada Fund and other capital funding that has been received but has not yet been expended. So we ended our year in a strong position with our net financial assets of $28,343,000 versus the previous year, $26,426,000. Additionally, we have what we would call non-financial assets, so those would be items that are not readily convertible into cash, so primarily your long-term capital assets, such as buildings and equipment and other such items. So we have total non-financial assets of $81,500,000 versus $73,171,000 in the previous year. And there were some significant expenditures on capital items during the year that increased that balance. So then we end our year with the accumulated surplus that we would have seen on the previous page of $109,349,000. Any questions there? Okay, so moving along to the Statement of Change in Your Net Financial Assets. So this would be that $28,343 number we saw on the previous page, and it just shows how that number would have changed from previous year. So we start with our annual surplus, which was $9,751,000. We adjust for items related to capital transactions, so that would be the acquisition of your capital assets, your amortization, your transfers of your work in progress, and any gain and loss and sales from any sales of capital assets. And in addition, then we factor in the change in use in your prepaid expenses and inventory. So we had a net change in the financial assets of a positive $1,917,000. We added that to the financial assets that you had at the beginning of the year, the $26,426,000, and we ended out the year with your net financial assets of $28,343,000. The next statement here is the Statement of Changes in Cash Flow. So again, this is just a reconciliation of how your cash would change from one year to the other. So we start the year with our surplus. So we start the year with our surplus deficit of the nine million, seven-hundred-and-fifty-one-thousand. We add to that any non-cash items such as your amortization and accretion expenses. And then we also look at the changes in your, what we would call, operating cash flows. So those would be the day-to-day receivables, payables, prepaid, deposits, and items as such. So we ended our year with a net cash increase from operating activities of twenty-three million, eight-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand. We then look at your capital expenditures, so those would be the purchases of capital assets and other related items. So we have a net expenditure of twelve million, twenty-seven-thousand on capital-related items. And then we look at any financing activities. So we had a repayment of long-term debt of a little over a million dollars, a million, nine-thousand. And then there's some investing activities that are factored in as well. So we have a net increase in our cash from prior year of ten million, six-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand dollars. We add that to the cash we had at the beginning of the year, the fifty-eight million, eight-fifty-nine, and we ended out our year with cash of sixty-nine thousand, five-hundred-and-forty-one dollars. After that, we get into the notes to the financial statements. I understand that everybody would have had the financial statements in advance of this meeting, so I won't go through all the notes in detail. However, we'll certainly take any questions on anything that would be included there. The one note that I do want to highlight for council would be the subsequent event note. I'm just going to scroll down to it here. If you give me a second, it's near the back. So there was a subsequent event that was anticipated where the province passed legislation to allow the Kings Rehab Facility to create a society and continue operations under that society effective April first of two thousand and twenty-six, I believe, or two thousand and twenty-five. I'm just trying to get to it here. Two thousand and twenty-five. So what that could potentially mean for the municipality is that in the future, should that change result in relinquishment of control of the Kings Rehab Society, that would no longer be consolidated into these consolidated financial statements, because they would no longer be considered a subsidiary of the municipality. Again, this is anticipated, but it will have a significant impact on the overall consolidated financial statements. So I'd just like to bring that to everybody's attention in advance, as it's something we will be working through over the next audit period. And finally, just because I just happened to go by it and it caught my eye, the segmented information in the back, I don't know how to get this. Sorry, I'm trying to just get this bar to the side to go with. Anyway, the segmented in the back breaks down your revenues and expenditures in a different format, and it shows the total expenditures by category. And one thing that I think is important to note is when we look at the salary, wages and benefits, along with the contracted services for the municipality, we have approximately fifty-nine million dollars or so in expenditures on wages and benefits and contracted services. And I just think when we look at the economic impact that that has in your region and how significant an employer, the municipality and its subsidiaries are to the region, that that's a very positive thing, to see such a significant portion of the revenues being put back into the community through wages. So just something nice to highlight. So I'll just pause there and open up if there's any questions on the financial statements.
Any questions to Jessica on? No, I guess not, Jessica.
Okay, well, that will conclude my presentation.
Okay. And I would ask for a member of council to move the approval of the consolidated financial statements, moved by deputy mayor Packford, second by councillor Hiltz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion carried. And now for the non-consolidated one, Jessica.
Thank you. Greg, are you doing the non-consolidated?
Sorry for the confusion, Mr. Mayor. Just a presentation on the consolidated financial statements. See, non-consolidated are there for reference as an information item, but no presentation scheduled.
Okay. We'd like to have a councillor move receipt of the non-consolidated for information. Moved by councillor Allen, second by councillor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. Thank you. And thank you very much, Jessica.
Thank you.
All right. And now we'll be looking for a proclamation request from the African Heritage Month two thousand and twenty-five to be presented by Grayson Parker, our diversity specialist.
Good morning, Mayor Corcom and council. For those of you I haven't had the pleasure of meeting yet, my name is Grayson Parker and I am a diversity specialist here with the municipality. This morning, I am here to present a proclamation request for African Heritage Month. The origin of this request comes from the November twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-one memo from African Nova Scotia Affairs, the Strategy for Belonging, and our Proclamations Policy COM dash zero-two dash zero-zero-three. As I mentioned, my intent this morning is to present this proclamation request for adoption in accordance with the municipality's proclamation policy COM dash zero-two dash zero-zero-three. Within the municipality of the County of Kings are two historic African Nova Scotia communities, Gibson Woods and Pine Woods. Both communities are located west of Caning and north of Kentville. The community of Gibson Woods was named after George Gibson, a Black loyalist who purchased forty acres of land for forty pounds in eighteen oh-two. Notable families from the community include Gibson, Clements, Browning, and States. Pine Woods, now referred to as Aldershot, was founded by sisters Dinah Powell and Chloe Lansey upon fleeing enslavement from Benjamin Belcher. Upon Belcher's death in eighteen oh-four, a Kings County court probated his will in a state inventory which listed four human beings, Jack, Samuel, James, and Blue, as chattel. Today, Lansey Road and Aldershot, albeit misspelled, is named after community co-founder Chloe. This community's recognizable names include Jones, Lansey, Smith, Bell, and Powell. February has been recognized as Black History Month across Canada since nineteen fifty. The month was originally chosen in the United States because of the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln, who played a large role in the emancipation of enslaved Blacks. Although Abraham Lincoln contributed to the abolition movement in the United States, it is important to note that his legacy is a controversial one rooted in certain prejudices that were common, sorry, that were common in his time and unfortunately remain so. In two thousand and eight, the month of February was officially declared Black History Month by the Canadian Senate. Because of Nova Scotia's rich four-hundred-year history of contributions from people of African descent, in nineteen ninety-six, the month was renamed African Heritage Month. The Department of African Nova Scotia Affairs, ANSA, held the inaugural reading of the African Heritage Month proclamation in two thousand and four at Province House. Since then, ANSA has been working to spread awareness around the province to form an African Heritage Month information network. This network has members from each region and collaborates to develop a theme and promote African Heritage Month events and municipal proclamations. This network also produces an educational poster for the month. This year, the municipality has assumed a leadership role in the network by forming and facilitating a regional network to ensure that perspectives and positions of diasporic community members are represented. The network is comprised of members representing the community, the Annapolis Valley Regional Centre for Education, the Black Educators Association, Acadia University, Nova Scotia Community College, the Portal Youth at Reach Association's Cultural Connector Initiative, and the Town of Kentville. This group is advised by Brenda Francis, ANSA's regional programs admin officer. The theme for African Heritage Month two thousand and twenty-five is Legacy in Action: Celebrating Black Brilliance. The press release shares, "This theme highlights the living legacy of Black Nova Scotians, honoring the impact and perseverance of the longstanding community. It highlights the greatness we hold, the paths we lead through our deep connection with our elders, storytelling, the rhythms of change, and the ability to look back and to move forward." The theme also aligns with a reflection of empowerment and leadership over the past decade of the United Nations International Decade for People of African Descent, DEEPAD, that took place from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty-four. The goal of DEEPAD was to strengthen global cooperation and support of people of African descent, increase awareness, and progress towards presence in all aspects of society. On January thirtieth of two thousand and eighteen, the Prime Minister officially endorsed the Decade for People of African Descent, and on February seventh of two thousand and twenty-four, it was announced that it would be extended federally until two thousand and twenty-eight. Proclaiming African Heritage Month in the municipality of the County of Kings contributes to the implementation of the municipality's Strategy for Belonging, specifically the African diaspora and anti-Black racism lens and reparations lens. This action acknowledges the need for reparations while building public trust, awareness, and engagement through celebrating the contributions of the African diaspora. This moves the municipality towards the vision of being a community of communities. A draft of the proposed proclamation is inside your agenda package. There are no financial implications for this request. Alternatively, Committee of the Whole may choose not to recommend municipal council to proclaim February as African Heritage Month. To implement this plan, we will publish a proclamation of the municipality, the proclamation on the municipality's website, and hold a reading of the proclamation at the African Heritage Month proclamation event taking place the evening of February sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. For engagement, we will have social media awareness building and community events. So my recommendation is that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council proclaim February two thousand and twenty-five as African Heritage Month in the municipality of the County of Kings. Thank you.
Thank you, Grayson. Okay, is there any questions to Grayson? Councillor MacPherson.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, I would like to comment, not a question, but I'd like to commend Ms. Parker for her presentation. I found it to be very informative and educational, and it was certainly enlightening to hear. Thank you for that.
Okay, that's great. Thank you. And councillor Sappington.
Thank you. I really appreciate the education. I'd like to say I didn't know a lot of that local history because I moved here just three years ago, but I suspect that a lot of the local people don't know the local history as well, so I appreciate the opportunity to educate us. I also thought it was interesting that you used some American history, and as a person that earned her Canadian citizen, having formerly lived in the U.S., I just wanted to also highlight, having learned the American education of Black history, that the Underground Railroad led to Canada. So thank you so much, and I'm really hopeful that this will pass and we get to celebrate African history or Black history.
Thank you. Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to proclaim February twenty-fifth, African Heritage Month, moved by councillor Gates, second by councillor Best. Any, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion carried. Now we move on to eight B, Policy FIN dash zero-five dash zero-zero-eight Business Expense. Karen Ward, policy analyst, will be presenting. Morning, Karen.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of council. I'm here today because the Municipal Government Act, Sections twenty-three, three, and four-oh-eight A.A., requires that council review the municipality's business expense policy by January thirty-first following a regular election. During the two thousand and twenty-two municipality of the County of Kings boundary review engagement sessions, attendees voiced a desire to see their municipal council be more representative of its constituents. Discussion included amending the municipal reimbursement policy to encourage a greater diversity of candidates running for municipal office by removing barriers to council membership with regards to reimbursement for carers of both children and adult dependents. The lack of dependent care expense policies available to many municipal councillors acts as a significant barrier to women's political participation in local government. The reimbursement of carer expenses to parents and carers helps to bring a wider range of people into public office and supports them in remaining there. A review of thirty-eight current municipal and other public center organization policies was undertaken. The municipality's business expense policy is already one of the more forward-thinking and inclusive policies currently in effect. However, there is always opportunity for improvement. The recommended amendments are an increase in the daily maximum for standard care from seventy dollars to two hundred, an increase in the annual maximum rate from two thousand to two thousand five hundred, the amount payable to be calculated by the official start and end time of the meeting, plus up to a maximum of one hour for traveling to and from the meeting, and the ability for council members to claim expenses related to the cost of family care for dependents residing on a part-time basis should council meetings conflict with custody schedules set out in joint custody arrangements. In addition, to be comparable with other municipalities in the province, an increase is recommended to the per diem rates reimbursable to council members for lunch expenses from twenty dollars to twenty-two dollars, and dinner expenses from thirty-three dollars to thirty-five dollars. The financial implications are with the increase proposed for dependent expenses, the maximum budget impact would be five thousand dollars, but is more likely to be in the one thousand to fifteen hundred dollars based on historic usage. The increase in per diems for lunch and dinner expense reimbursement is negligible. And the recommendation is that Committee of the Whole recommend municipal council provide seven days' notice per Section forty-eight, subsection one of the Municipal Government Act, to adopt amendments to Policy FIN zero-five zero-zero-eight Business Expense, as outlined in the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four request for decision.
Thank you, Karen. Any questions to Karen on the recommendation? No? Okay, so we get a member of council to move the presentation, please. Moved by councillor Sappington, second by councillor Allen. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. Now we'll move on to C, Policy FIN zero dash zero-five dash zero-two-zero, Hospitality. And back to Karen, please.
So next is the FIN zero-five zero-two-zero Hospitality Policy. As with the business expense policy, the Municipal Government Act requires that council review this policy by January thirty-first following an election. All proposed amendments come from the Financial Reporting and Accounting Manual, which is a regulation of the Municipal Government Act, Sections four-five-one and five-two-zero. All proposed amendments are currently in effect in practice, just not set out in All proposed amendments are currently in effect in practice, just not set out in policy. Proposed amendments include the requirement that all hospitality expenditures be pre-authorized; any exceptions require submission of detailed reasoning why prior approval was not sought; the municipality does not reimburse expense claims for alcohol purchases by an individual; prohibition of a person from authorizing his or her own claim; establishment of the expenditures that qualify as hospitality expenses; requirement that hospitality claims include name and title of guests as well as the business objective for the expenditure; the requirement of detailed and itemized receipts to support hospitality claims; and the addition of the legislative requirement that each municipality must adopt a hospitality policy as required by Sections 233 and 408AA of the MGA. And with that, I have the recommendation, the Committee of the Whole recommend that Municipal Council provide seven days' notice per Section 48 Subsection 1 of the Municipal Government Act to adopt amendments to Policy FIN-05-020 Hospitality as outlined in the December 17th, 2024 Request for Decision.
Thank you. Any questions to Karen on this recommendation? No? Okay. I'll need a mover and a seconder for this, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Peckford, seconded by Councillor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. Wonderful. Thank you. And now we'll move on to number nine, Engineering and Public Works, RFP 21-13 Screening Building Project Design, Hansboarder and Aylesford, being presented by Director of Engineering, Brad Kerrigan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Like to make a note, that is the first time I've been able to do this without admin's assistance, so I'm feeling pretty good right now. Thank you very much for your time. I mentioned, I believe, we had actually a tour with many of the councillors earlier this, actually the end of the last week on Friday, and told you that I'd be coming back to council with some information on screening projects that have long since been overdue with the municipality. These projects actually started with grant applications and recognizing these projects back in 2021, and finally getting to the table here that we're getting prepared for construction. So as you can see, originally, the RFP for these screens in Hansboarder and Aylesford was originally released as RFP 21-13. What you see on the screen is kind of not the exact equipment, but a schematic of the type of equipment that we're talking about when we talk about screening out of inorganic materials before they actually hit our sewage lagoons. I should also note that we are cooperatively looking at two or three other projects, putting these screens in at a few other sites, namely Aldershaugh, Waterville, Canning, maybe others, but those ones for sure. Those ones are with a separate engineering designer. These ones are with designer CBCL. So what we're looking for today is additional funding for the design and engineering-related costs to these two specific projects, the one in Hansboarder and the one in Aylesford. Just to note, Aylesford's project also includes the requirement for a new water well, so there's no water in Aylesford to clean screens and UV lights, so we're looking to install a well there. And what we're looking for is so that water's required for the UV and also to add washrooms to these screening buildings. So the design was originally initiated in March by CBCL. Original plans and tender included a screening project for Canning, which was later abandoned because we recognized that Canning required long-term planning needs with an expansion, future expansion at the plant, just to accommodate future growth in Canning. So we are planning to release the construction tender later this year, just before, probably in the months of February, March, depending on how long the design takes to complete, and planning for construction starting in spring or summer of '25. So the requirements that we're looking to add to the existing design, just to give you the background, when I came in, the building is very much what was simply a building to do screening only. And what I recognize, looking at these projects, is these two sites in particular, Aylesford and Hansboarder, have no washroom facilities, they have no office space, they have no spot realistically to even wash your hands on these sites, no accessible washroom. We've got portable toilets that we're bringing into these sites. So if we're going through the expensive building, the screening building, it only made sense to me to add a washroom facility, add a small office space, the technicians and operators aren't working out of the cabs of their trucks, and also to add emergency shower in these buildings. One of the items, coming from a maintenance background myself, I noticed that the screening equipment that I showed you in that first slide, there's no structural I-beam support over that. So when somebody comes in to maintain these things, they're going to be trying to manhandle parts coming out of these without any kind of equipment over them to do safe lifting practices in order to have a trolley and an I-beam, and chain falls above it so that when they're taking the equipment out, they have some mechanical support to make safer maintenance of the equipment, which we know is going to be required. As well, there was no allowance for generator feeds or auto-transfer switches to the new buildings, so if the power went out, basically these buildings don't run, everything would bypass, and we would not have any screens in the event of a power failure, it would just flow through. Obviously, putting a building with an office and washroom requires need for heat pump or other means of heating and cooling. And the original pricing that we originally got from CBCL had no allowance for construction management, so we've asked CBCL, or the design contractor, which is CBCL in this case, to include construction management services in their price. So what we're looking at, financial impact, the original design budget allowed for only design not including construction management was $85,711. With the re-quotes of the upgrades that I just mentioned in the previous slide, the upgrades would total $55,150. It was also quoted that construction management of both sites, not each site, both sites, would equate to $59,736. And just to note on the financial impact, that this project, not the design specifically, but the construction of the project, is funded by the ICIP program, which will contribute up to 73.3% of the construction costs, with the balance coming from sewer capital reserve and long-term debt. And I will leave the recommendation to you and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions to Director Kerrigan? Councillor Best?
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. We don't have anybody on staff that can take care of the project. We have to hire somebody for $55,000 or $59,000. There's nobody on staff can take care of it?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councillor Best. We have staff on-site that would be on-site to watch and observe and act as a daily or weekly inspection of the construction progress, but we have always had the need for having an engineering background to realistically make sure that the contractor does everything in the contract, down to the letter, to do all the technical review, to, you know, it's more than just being on-site to watch the contractor, it's to make sure that when, if any change orders come through or any progress payments, that engineer takes responsibility for the overall project to make sure everything was built as per design.
Thank you.
See a late license on the, Councillor Lutz?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you. I know we had a huge increase in inorganic material through the wastewater systems after COVID. Is that, I know we've done public outreach on, and maybe this was answered on the tour on Friday, but have we seen any decrease, or is it just continuing to be a massive issue?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not, I can't comment whether it's any better or worse than it was, whether, what may have drove things during COVID. It's just a good business practice to remove those materials at this point, instead of loading up your lagoon with materials that will never decompose.
Yeah, I think the reason I ask is because I think about when Valley Waste was here last week and they were talking about EPR, or EPP, EPP, EPR for Extended Producer Responsibility for paper and plastic. And I find it really frustrating that the municipality has to bear a lot of the cost for these products that these companies make and sell, and they don't do any, they don't bear any of the financial costs of dealing with it on the other end, which is downloaded to us and the property taxpayer. So I find that really annoying, and I don't know if there's any push to go to these companies, the flushable white people, the baby white people, I don't know, and push them to help offset the cost of the damage that their product causes our stuff. So that's just more of a general comment than anything else, but I find it really frustrating that, you know, that it becomes our issue when, you know, we obviously have known from the beginning that these things do not belong in the sewer system. So anyway, that's probably a conversation for NSFM or a higher, you know, take that elsewhere, but thank you for your presentation, and thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Councillor Allen?
Thank you, Mayor. Through you too, Brad. The cost of the screening building in Hansboarder, is that cost shared with municipality of West Hans?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The costs of operation are, and I probably would want to defer to the Director of Finance to confirm exactly how that is funded, I'm not sure on the capital, and I would rather ask than guess.
Unfortunately, I don't have an answer for that right now at the current time, but we can follow up and provide a response.
Thank you. All right. Thank you. Councillor Gates?
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. The plans that we're paying for and receiving, we will receive those, to have those on file after we pay for them.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we will.
Councillor Sappington?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The tour was fascinating, and yes, there was discussion about responsibility from perhaps different organizations that perhaps put more strain on our system than the average citizen. But I'm not an engineer, so I also wanted to further ask questions in regards to that. Would that be able to be bypassed if larger organizations were to put screens proactively from their own factory or business whatsoever, so that before it goes into our system, they are preemptively screening? Am I to understand that that can be done? And if so, could we as a municipality require that to be done when these sorts of businesses or huge buildings are being built?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We could possibly, we did discuss that a little bit of, you know, the onus on manufacturing facilities a little bit. Most or a lot of these products, I shouldn't say most, because I don't know the composition, a lot of these are household. So there's really no way unless we're saying that every household has to have some kind of screening, which obviously is not realistically feasible.
And the unfortunate part is prove what household it came out of, too. Director Burr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a follow-up to the question from Councillor Allen. So the agreement is 74.4% between the West Hans municipality and 25.6% with the municipality of Kings for both capital and operating cost sharing. So that is, that would be billed back to the municipality based on those percentages.
Thank you, Director, for getting that so quick. All right, so we have a motion there, so I need a mover and a seconder for the motion. Moved by Councillor Sappington, seconded by Councillor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, so motion carried. And now we'll move on to Contract Award 24-40 Infrastructure Maintenance Services East. And again, Director Kerrigan, please.
Thank you. There will be one presentation here today, there's two recommendations to follow. This is for Award of Contract 24-40 and Contract 24-41. Historically, this infrastructure maintenance services contract that we've maintained has been a single contract. This year, and I believe I get into it a little bit more, was actually split into two, an East and West, two different contracts, to allow potential for more bidders. So the background on the maintenance services contract, the previous contract was issued in November 2019. That contract was then later extended for an additional one year, which means that the contract actually expires as of December 31st, 2024. This contract is to replace that. New contract will start on January 1st, 2025. The contract consists of unit-based contract rates that cover day-to-day activities to ensure the municipality's infrastructure is maintained for a standard level of service for a three-year period. It includes provision of equipment, materials, and labor for maintenance of municipality-owned roads, sidewalks, stormwater drainage systems, sewer water systems, as well as parks, trails, and recreation facilities. So basically, anything infrastructure-related that we require civil maintenance work could be done through this contract. The intent of the contract is to maintain satisfactory service for the contracted period of three years. And just to note, there's an importance of maintaining this infrastructure during vulnerable emergency service situations. This type of work is often unexpected, unplanned, and requires immediate actions and expenses. That's why we have to have a contractor on file, so that we don't have to go to a public tender event in the event that we need to call a contractor to handle an emergency The tender process was executed in accordance with current procurement policy, FIN-05-00, where the lowest bid price is not the sole determining factor. The submissions are also evaluated on a weighted score for each factor, which takes into account the, how long the business has been in place, how many employees they have, the equipment they have, and the, the cost is only a portion of the weighted factor, I believe 40% in this case for this particular, for these particular contracts. Also of note is individual projects completed under this contract will not exceed a value of $50,000. Project over this threshold would still be publicly tendered through the capital program. Contract change that I mentioned, as you can see, we basically drew a line through the county, where contractors were invited to bid on both East and West zones. You did not have to bid on both. We were hoping that we may get more people come to the table, contractors come to the table with competitive pricing, and it allows contractors to bid perhaps in work, for work in the area that they, that their businesses are, and would allow additional contractors. their businesses are and would allow additional contractors. Just a note with the financial implication, there are price increases from the, the two thousand nineteen contract and even the extended pricing. Equipment increase of forty-four percent on average. Material pricing increases from forty-three to two hundred and eighty percent and personnel increases of one hundred and twenty-two point five percent on average. Contract-related costs have significantly increased and emergency services required are often unpredictable, which is probably dictating, when we're making the call for, for contractors to go, we're basically saying, we need you to come out today or tomorrow to do this work or, you know, later this week to do this work. So a lot of the time contractors are, are, you know, leaving other sites that they're working on to come and work for the municipality. And would be happy to answer any questions if I can and we'll leave the recommendations for, for council.
Great, thank you. Any questions to Director Carrigan? Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. So when we request maintenance done, is there a standard that the contractor is like upheld to when we're requesting work of them? And I guess sort of the reason I'm asking, not a standard by which the contractor does their work, but for example, I get lots of phone calls about a particular municipal road in our, in our county and on the cracking and the, and they want the cracks filled in the pavement. And so, or is that something, like if that comes up, we notify them and they come fill it? Is that, and is there a, like a standard by which we say, we have this many cracks and this is when they get filled? Or is it sort of like on a complaint-based basis? Like I have to, I get a call and then I call the department and the department calls the contractor and then they go? Like, is there sort of a, a more general standard or is it more complaints-based?
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. The call-ups are all based on a call-up, so the contractor doesn't decide when they go out. It's up to us to call them out to say, we want you to go crack seal or we want you to patch pave or we need a ditch dug for drainage. So that is on us as the municipality staff to recognize and call them up. There are some times that it's complaint-driven and in full honesty, it shouldn't be. We're going to make a better attempt moving forward that we get staff out on a regular basis and inspect these, these roads and ditches ahead of time and proactively call them up and say, okay, we're seeing some issues here or we know we always have issues on a certain road, so let's get out and, and get these call-ups made sooner before it leads to resident complaints.
That's, that's great information. Thank you so much.
Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor, through you. Did you find there was a significant saving in splitting this contract up? I know, obviously, it's hard to know what it would have been if it was one single contract, but did it come out that you think there was a significant savings in doing this? Because he has the same contractor for both east and west. And just another follow-up question to that was, were there more bidders than you anticipated because of this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I will say no. We were hoping that we were going to get more contractors to bid and that was going to drive a better price. Nothing that I know of that the price was, was better. Obviously, the price went up significantly, so I would say we didn't receive better pricing and we did not receive additional contractors, you know, to bid on this work that we thought we may.
Do you think in the future you would go back to just one singular contract for the entire county?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I, I think we would look at it again. I know it's three years down the road, but we would look at it again just to say, what's the best, the best for us? I'm not sure why other contractors didn't bid it. It probably is going to be worth some, you know, some discussion with contractors ahead of time to, to say, you know, is there reasons or, you know, that you didn't bid this contract? There, there's more than two contractors in, in the valley, you know, why did, I believe for, for these, I believe there were two contractors, maybe three, but there's not, there wasn't very many.
Thank you.
Counselor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Was this contract also for clarification on a point system for awarding the contract? Is it structured under a point system?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, yes, it was. As I said, there was, it's, it's all based out of a hundred total points. Pricing was worth forty percent and then there were four other items. I can't, I don't know specifically what they are, but they were each worth a, a certain portion based on experience, based on equipment, based on personnel.
Counselor Bass.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. Just a quick question, how many applications do we have for east and how many for west?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, the report was actually generated by former manager Pearson, so I would have to double-check. I can get back to you. I know, I believe there were two in each, but I would have to confirm that.
Thank you.
Seeing no more questions, I would need a mover and a seconder for the first recommendation and move by Counselor Gates, seconded by Counselor McPherson. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Now we'll need a recommendation on the second one. Move by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Lutz, thank you. All those for against, please press your button. Now we'll move on to, I guess we've taken care of both those, Financial Services, Capital Investment Plan and Cannon Community Building Fund Allocation to Villages. Director Barr, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So today I'll be presenting the proposed two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five Capital Investment Plan, otherwise known as CIP, and also discuss the CCBF village allocation through your approval as well. So this will bring a lot of information. I've talked in front of council before about the, the new grant program with the villages. This will kind of give you some more insight into the existing practice that's there now. So the Capital Investment Plan includes the capital budgets of the municipality and the seven villages. You've heard me talk about it in the past in terms of how we consolidate everything with the villages into one CIP that we would remit to the province. It's a, really a five-year capital plan that's provided the province with all the sources of funding for each of the projects that are itemized. When you consolidate everything with the municipality and the seven villages, it works out to one hundred and sixty-one projects. Excuse me, sorry about that, one hundred and sixty-one projects. So if you look at the report, I believe there's forty-seven from the municipality. And our financial analyst, Kevin Wheaton, you saw that he was a, a five-year-long service award. He's the one that's actually prepares all this information. He's the one that's prepared the report as well. I'm just here doing the presentation today on his behalf. But one hundred and sixty-one projects, which is quite a significant number when you look at all the, the villages and municipality brought together. We actually go through them, Kevin does, in terms of ensuring that all the CCBF projects have been determined to be eligible projects under the, the established criteria. So I'm going to walk through kind of the, the details at a very high level and then walk you through some of the individual projects that are proposed to be using CCBF. So the way that the, the, if you look at the appendix B, in the first part of appendix B, it's a detail of all the projects that are planned for twenty-four, twenty-five for the municipality and for the seven villages. And it outlines all the detailed sources of funding, whether it be debt, CCBF, other village funds, other grant programs. The total of everything that's contained within that first part of appendix B is for the municipality, capital budget side of things, is a little over forty-one and a half million dollars, of which almost five million dollars of CCBF would be used to fund those projects. And for the seven villages, the total is nine point six million dollars of capital projects, of which one point eight million dollars of CCBF would be utilized. In the second part of that appendix B, again at a very high level, it goes into more detail and this is very small because it's coming from the, the form for the CIP that we use with the province. It's all projects that are really forecasted at this point between twenty twenty-five and twenty-six through to the year twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And again, it shows all the detailed sources of funding associated with that. For the municipality, obviously, we, we do our best around what the five-year capital budget would be, but obviously, things will probably get added to it as we move through those years. As of this point, those remaining four years, municipality is about twenty-eight and a half million dollars in a capital budget, using about five point seven million dollars of CCBF. And the villages is a little over twenty million dollars worth of projects using five million dollars of CCBF. So just to talk a little bit about the agreement itself, so you've heard me, and I guess you've had the benefit, I guess, of some of the discussions around the village grant program to learn that, you know, there is a, a previously CCBF funding agreement that was in place that expired March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and the, the province and the, that had been in negotiations with the federal government and just recently announced and negotiated the new agreement, which will extend for another ten years and expire March thirty-first, twenty thirty-four. So the municipality under that new agreement and under the funding allocation that's established by the province is set to receive almost two point three million dollars for twenty-four, twenty-five. It actually is just slightly less than the previous year. There's no growth factors built into it in terms of what would be there, but based on the new agreement, it's about two point three million, which is only a few thousand dollars less than, than previous years. Typically with the agreement, the annual CIP filing deadline is December the first. They extended it this year to December eighteenth because of the delays associated with negotiating and signing that new agreement. So they had to distribute forms to us and have us complete everything and then bring it in front of individual councils for approval. So that's why it's, uh, being presented today as opposed to prior to the September first deadline normally. So as part of the agreement, the municipality has to do a, a pre-construction report. You've heard me talk about this a little bit before. Those are due April thirtieth. We have to also do an annual expenditure report, kind of outlines what we spend gas tax on. There's a draft version of that that's due in May thirty-first of every year, with the final report due at the end of July. And then we have to file the five-year capital investment plan, which I said is September the first. On top of that, there's a communications protocol, which includes having approved CCBF signage at every job site. I think it's over a hundred thousand dollar job you have to have the, the signage. So we've talked before about the allocation to the villages, so I won't spend a lot of time on this. Very quickly is that CCBF is allocated to the villages under a previously approved council sharing model. From two thousand and nine, it was at two-thirds of the projects for water and sewer. And then, and in twenty twelve, I believe off the top of my head, it was expanded to be a hundred percent CCBF can be used by the villages for water and sewer projects, two-thirds for any other projects of the, the overall funding costs. So the, the allocation to villages, so there's four villages, and I'll talk about that in one second here, where there's a formula that's used to allocate the villages proportion based on their water and wastewater infrastructure compared to what the municipality has and what the villages have for that critical infrastructure. So I mentioned before that there's four villages that maintain either water or sewer or both, Cannon, Kingston, Newmanus and Port Williams. So here's the actual allocation amount. So when you look at, in the bottom right-hand corner, that's the total amount of the CCBF for the municipality, about two point three million. So under that cost-sharing formula for twenty-four, twenty-five, Kings County is about one point four million and then the other four villages, their preset amounts are, are itemized there on the screen based on the percentage of their total infrastructure. So you'll note that each of theirs are just slightly below where they would have been last year as well. So again, another quick little recap, so four villages have water and wastewater infrastructure, received a calculated allocation, three do not, Aylesford, Greenwood and Quamal Square. And they apply for allocations from the municipal portion of the CCBF. So when I go through the projects that are here, we'll talk about those a little bit more. So again, I mentioned about the, the VICE programs, that's a new capital grant program with the villages. So this version of the CIP, this twenty-four, twenty-five CIP version was developed with a presumed continuation of that CCBF sharing program. It's important to note that from twenty-five, twenty-six to twenty-eight, twenty-nine in the CIP, any of the projects that are there do not represent a commitment by the municipality. They're mostly there as representation of the, the projects that will be undertaking, how they would plan to use gas tax. When we implement the VICE program, which we're in the process of, of finalizing the agreements and getting sent out to the villages now, we'll actually have to require, you know, the changes in terms of future CIPs. What we'll have to do as part of the transition is ask the villages to identify their projects that'll utilize the CIP, the CCBF money that has been allocated to them already, how they plan to use that. But new projects moving forward in the future will be part of the VICE program. So we'll have to modify how the CIP works and over the five years, it'll phase the villages out in terms of the projects that would be included in our submissions in future years. So to kind of break up the group, so with the seven villages, we're going to talk a little bit about the, the CCBF projects now. For the villages that do get that annual allocation, so again, those four that have infrastructure, they are able to reserve any unspent funds, so if they haven't used previous CCBF allocations in the past, they are able to bank that and use it and basically save it up for future projects. So you'll see reconciliations in all of the reports that show the allocation amounts that they have, the projects they're planning to use it for, what the projected ending balance is, that kind of stuff. So I'll take you through each of the villages at a very summary level, at least for the four that get a pre-allocation. So for the village of Newmanus, the total capital budget items are almost one point two million dollars. And you can see in their report that they're not planning to utilize any CCBF for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. The, the big reason for that, and you may not recall from a past presentation, is that as part of the Newmanus's participation in the regional sewer and some of the major capital work that's been done there, they've chosen to utilize some of their CCBF associated with, with that instead of participating in the long-term debt called by, by the municipality for the construction and, and work at the regional sewer. So that's almost about one point three million dollars with the CCBF that they are, are utilizing for that project, so not part of their village project. So this year, no CCBF utilization. The village of Port Williams has a total of a little over one point seven million dollars in a capital budget. They're only looking to utilize fifteen thousand five hundred dollars from CCBF and the three projects that are identified in their sheet is the wellhead upgrade for three thousand dollars, a loading dock addition at the water treatment plant for five thousand dollars and roof replacements for wellhouses for seventy-five hundred dollars. And you'll see here when you, when I talk about, you know, one hundred and sixty-one projects, you, you can kind of see where with the new program, we're going to eliminate a lot of work associated with that, that we're only looking for in the new program, the projects that are actually going to use that municipal grant as opposed to every capital project that they have. For the CIP, we have to include every capital project that they're maintaining and show all the sources of funding. The village of Kingston is, has a total capital budget of nine hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars that's included in the CIP. They're forecasting to use five hundred thousand dollars of their allocated CCBF in this year, which is upgrades to the sewer treatment plant, really addressing some electrical, mechanical and some structural issues that they've identified. I believe this is a carryover project from the previous year as well, but that's their, their only project that they're looking to utilize CCBF for, for this fiscal year. The village of Cannon, the last of the four villages that have allocated the amounts, utilizing or had a total budget of about three point nine million dollars, and they're looking to utilize about five hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars of their CCBF. At a high level, here's the, the list of the five projects. So there's sidewalk work on Chapel Road, almost four hundred thousand dollars, waterline on Chapel Road, seventy-five thousand dollars, valverine statement throughout their system of about twenty-five thousand dollars, a sidewalk replacement program, project on Chapel Road for a little over fifty-two, and then the water system assessment for thirty-eight hundred. You'll remember the request for the letter of support from the village of Cannon, looking to get some money from the grid grant program. This is the balance of their, their matching obligation from that project coming from So the other three villages, as mentioned before, that don't have annual allocations, their approved funding comes from the municipal share of the CCBF. And so any CCBF that gets allocated to them is, is carried forward if it's unspent on a project-by-project basis. So if there isn't a pre, a previous allocation, they don't even take it, it does still stay there to be utilized by the, by the village. So for the village of Aylesford, in their CIP submissions that they have for us, there's two projects that are requesting funding from CCBF. One is the construction of three hundred and sixty-five meters of sidewalk on Pine Avenue. They've got, they state that the new sidewalk would create a safer walkway for residents and families in a significant residential area to connect with the main walking loop in the village. It's also would encourage active living amongst the residents, small business customers and visitors to the community. So the total budget is a hundred and five thousand dollars. I believe this is a carryover from last year with CCBF, two-thirds of it being used. So seventy thousand dollars for that project. The second one they have identified in the CIP is sidewalk on Victoria Road. So to construct some new sidewalk on a portion of Victoria Road as well, create a safer walkway for youth participating in swimming lessons and recreational swimming at a nearby facility. And this is also, I believe, a carryover project that's been split up into two parts. The village of Cornwall Square, there's two projects in their CIP that they've identified for use of CCBF funding. Bus shelters, again, I think this is a carryover project. That's, I think, two of the shelters are in front of Central Kings Rural High School. The other two are near Cambridge Court. So four shelters in total with a budget of seventy thousand dollars, using up two-thirds of the funding associated with that coming from CCBF. So a little, almost forty-seven thousand dollars. And then they're also looking at developing a Harvest Moon Trail rest area near the intersection with Black Rock Road. And the rest area would include a gazebo, a picnic table to provide a sheltered space for users of the trailer to take a break and have refreshments. They're, they've got a capital cost of ten thousand dollars of that. We're going to use sixty, almost sixty-seven hundred dollars of CCBF. And then the last village that has CIP submissions into it is Greenwood. They have a, three sidewalk projects identified. And I believe the first one is a carryover. So it's to construct sidewalk really on, on Rochnoch Road, Central Avenue and Argus Drive. These are the, the cost estimates associated with them, the three-hundred thousand dollars with Rochnoch, one sixty-eight for Central Avenue, three hundred thousand for Argus, with the two-thirds funding for each of those. Again, the first one, I believe, is, is a carryover, the other two being new additions. And for Greenwood, you'll note from the discussions in the past, they've gone approximately four years, I think, without using any CCBF. So typically, this is the way it works, is that they would use it in similar to projects like this. So the municipality, so financial implications of this RFD is that the municipality will use almost five million dollars of the CCBF and it aligns with the approved capital budget for the use of all those capital projects that were identified within the CIP and, and the use of CCBF. So that already aligns. And then the, the approved twenty-twenty-four, twenty-five CCBF for the non-allocation villages, as I mentioned earlier, will remain available for future years if unspent. So if it does get carried over, even with the new VICE program, that money will stay there for the allocation for the villages to be able to use in, in the next five years for their CCBF. So one other item I just want to mention is around the CCBF balances. So we provide like a, a continuity report through in Appendix A, where it shows what the opening CCBF balances were for the municipality, including the, the portions for the unallocated villages. And also the four villages that do get an allocation, show all of their twenty-four, twenty-five allocations of CCBF, their planned spending by both the municipality and the villages, and then what their projected closing CCBF balances would be. And then we provide a reconciliation of that back to the general ledger to, to show that, that continuity. From an implementation point of view, Kevin will be filing the CIP with the province very soon to meet the deadline for tomorrow. And then the villages will submit their claims and documentation for funding disbursements throughout the year. So with that, Mr. Mayor, two recommendations. One relates to approving the, the five-year CIP as detailed in Appendix B. And the second is to approve the CCBF funding allocations for use by the village projects as detailed in Appendix A.
Okay, any questions to Director Burr? Thank you. I guess it was as clear as much. Good job. So we'll need a motion for the first one, Counselor Best, and second by Deputy Mayor Peckford. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried, and now I'll be looking for a motion on the second one. Moved by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor Harding. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried, and now we'll go to Inspections and Enforcement Services. Our joint accessibility plan update from Katie MacArthur, Accessibility Coordinator. Katie?
Hi, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm here today to present a request for decision on our joint accessibility plan update, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight. So the origin of this RFD is council's approval of our joint accessibility plan, Kings County's first accessibility plan in April of twenty-twenty-two. And at the meeting of the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee just last week, on December eleventh, twenty-twenty-four, they recommended approval of the joint accessibility plan update by municipal council. So the intent today is to present our joint accessibility plan update, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight. And the Nova Scotia Accessibility Act requires that the plan be reviewed and updated every three years, making April first, twenty-twenty-five, the deadline for the municipality and the villages to meet. So the Accessibility Act requires prescribed public sector bodies, including municipalities and villages, to establish an accessibility advisory committee and develop an accessibility plan. The municipality of the County of Kings and the villages came together in March of twenty-twenty-one to form the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. And in twenty-twenty-two, council approved our joint accessibility plan. So the following is a list of legal, legal requirements for updating accessibility plans as per the Accessibility Act. So accessibility plans must be updated within three years, as I said, of the original plan deadline. So that's April first, twenty-twenty-five. They need to have an accessibility advisory committee and where half of the members must be persons with disabilities or representatives of organizations that represent persons with disabilities. So the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee meets this requirement. Prescribed public sector bodies must seek input from persons with disabilities and representatives of organizations representing persons with disabilities when preparing the accessibility plan. And I'll be discussing how we met that requirement in just a moment. The Accessibility Act also requires plans to include details on progress made to date by the community or the organization to identify, remove, and prevent barriers in policies, programs, practices, and services. So the plan update includes a progress section that notes highlights of progress made by the municipality and the villages to become more accessible over the past three years across a number of areas. So secondly, the plan, the update is required to include details on actions the community or organization will take to further identify, remove, and prevent barriers in policies, programs, practices, and services. So the plan update includes four broad focus areas, transit, built environment, community partnerships, and organizational culture, with a number of goals to action in each of those areas. And lastly, the process in place to assess the effect of the communities or organizations' proposed actions on accessibility. So again, the plan update includes a section on measurement and including actions and outcomes, as well as the tools we would use to collect that information. So each organization will collaborate with myself, with the accessibility coordinator, to create a yearly work plan on how they will action those goals and provide a progress report to the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee yearly. So accessibility plans must also include information on the procedures that the prescribed public sector body has in place to assess the following for their effect on accessibility for persons with disabilities. So any of its proposed policies, programs, practices, and services, as well as any proposed enactments or bylaws it will be administering. And these items will be tracked in similar fashion to the measurement and reporting. And accessibility plans must be made publicly available online. And if requested, plans must be provided in an accessible format within a reasonable time and at no cost. So in December of twenty-twenty-three, the accessibility quarter, excuse me, Accessibility Coordinator and the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee began the process of planning for the accessibility plan update, including a work plan and community consultation plan. And community consultation began in June of twenty-twenty-four and included a survey on the current and future state of accessibility in Kings County. The survey could be completed online or on paper, and feedback could also be sent via email or phone. And the Accessibility Coordinator attended community events to discuss accessibility and provide additional opportunities for feedback. Of the people who completed the survey, either online or on paper, three-quarters of those respondents either had a disability themselves, had a close family member with a disability, or worked with people with disabilities as a part of their job. And some respondents replied all three. So the feedback highlighted some examples of accessibility issues that are important to the community. So that included moving along roads and sidewalks in community, local transit, very specifically the scheduling of buses and stop location and access, finding local resources about accessibility, accessible housing, accessible public washrooms. And these issues are reflected in the goals of our accessibility plan update, twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight, and will be incorporated into the work plans created by all eight organizations. So based on the feedback provided by the community, discussions with staff and subject matter experts, an update to the, our joint accessibility plan was drafted. And additional feedback was sought from persons with disabilities and organizations that work with persons with disabilities. So in terms of financial implications, there are no financial implications at this point. Financial implications would be determined by the yearly work plan and incorporated into the municipality's budget process. The strategic plan alignment is strong communities, as accessibility is a strategic focus there. And in terms of alternatives, municipal council may suggest amendments to the draft of our joint accessibility plan update, twenty-five to twenty-eight. And implementation would include, the plan update would be submitted to council for adoption. And if approved, it would be posted to the municipal website. It would also then be submitted to village commissions, as they all need to individually approve the plan. So as I reviewed in the discussion, public engagement occurred in a number of ways, including the digital and paper surveys, email and phone feedback, and attendance at community events. Persons with disabilities and organizations that serve people with disabilities were also encouraged to review previous drafts to provide feedback. So I will leave you with the recommended motion.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Any questions to Katie on her report? Oh, okay, very good. All right, so we're looking for a motion to, to adopt the updated accessibility plan. Moved by Counselor Harding, second by Counselor Sappington. Any further discussion? If not, we'll press your button if you're in favor or against. Motion carried, and we'll move on to new council orientation presentations. Department of Finance Director Greg Burr will be presenting.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right, so I believe this is the last of the department orientations. So I'll, I'll walk you through kind of the high level of what our different divisions do within finance and IT. So financing and IT divisions are really broken out into three different areas. One is revenue, and I'll kind of talk about a lot what they do. IT and GIS, I'll explain that too, and then financial reporting as well. So three different managers, three different divisions within our department. So at the management level, there's obviously, there's twenty employees in total, including myself within the department. There's myself, and then the three managers are Scott McKay, Revenue Manager, Chad West, Manager of IT. And then we have a new manager of financial reporting, Tyler Honeywood, that starts on January the sixth. Within the revenue division, so again, we've got Scott McKay as the Revenue Manager. Four employees that work in there, we've got Susan Gray, who's the Revenue Assistant, Paula Delory, the Tax Clerk, who you would have saw today from the Excellence Award, Stacy Melvin, Accounts Payable Clerk, and the Reta Burns does payroll and water billing. So a very hard-working, busy group, working in the revenue side of things. So their responsibilities relate to a lot of different areas, but mostly centered around tax billing and collection. So they look after everything associated with that billing side of it. There's a lot of front-end collection that happens by the customer service representatives at the front. But overall responsibilities for collection lie with this division. They also look after a man is the assessment role for the municipality. They also look after any area rate administration. So if there's area rates for different, you know, villages or for recreation or for capital, for fire capital, those kinds of things, they look after all the administration of those, make sure they're inputted properly, communicated to residents, included on the tax billing. The tax sale process on an annual basis, there is a tax sale for any arrears properties. This group will look after that and manage the communication associated with that, notice of sale, and actually conducting the, the actual tax sale process with the assistance of our municipal solicitor. They also manage all of our banking agreements and relationships with the banking. And then you saw the Accounts Payable Clerk, so everything that gets paid, whether it be through Accounts Payable or through payroll, is done by this, this division as well. They also look after all the benefits administration that's done through the Reta. Billing for the Greenwood Water Utility is done by these folks as well, and then any special projects that come up. All, all the divisions are involved in special projects for the municipality. Some recent updates, so this might be a little dated now, because I put this slide deck together a month or so ago, not knowing exactly when we're going to do the orientation. But we've established recently a new banking agreement with Scotia Bank. We procured for that for the next five years, and that was recently approved. They've established new standard operating procedures for many of their processes that they have. So putting to paper a lot of the things that they would do day-to-day. And then Scott McKay's been involved a lot with reviewing and updating some key bylaws and policies that are related to the vision, most notably the private road bylaw, the street lighting bylaw, and the personal property tax reduction bylaw have been updated all recently. The next division is IT and GIS. So you all would know Chad West quite well, the manager of IT. He's got really two different arms. One is the GIS staff, so the Geoinformatics Specialist Monica Beaton. She's the Operations Team Lead as well. And then there's two GIS technicians, Suzanne Camo and Stephen Selinger. And then Holly Sanford, who used to be GIS Tech, a new position we created last year, the Data Analyst. She's in, in that role. On the IT side of things, you would have met Ken this morning at the Long Service Award, the Database Admin Developer. And then we've got Dan Ketti, who's the Network Administrator, and Brian Bain, who's the Support Specialist. So you see these guys running around here quite a bit for support for council meetings and any meetings that might be happening as well. So IT and GIS, their responsibilities are pretty self-explanatory. When you look at, they look after all the network and infrastructure side of things, obviously the database administration side of it, and then the geographic information systems, GIS. So a lot of the mappings that you would see, GIS does a lot of great work, and all of our staff do great work with it. GIS people have a lot of very interesting tools at their disposal. GIS people have a lot of very interesting tools at their disposal to kind of help us with communicating the things and maintaining and listing all of our assets. IT procurement is a big part of it as well. On the annual basis, we've got a lot of, uh, refreshing of our IT hardware that has to happen. Obviously, web and software development, so Ken is involved a lot with building new programs for us, our customer. I'll talk about that in a second, but some of our internal databases that are maintained, Ken would do a lot of work associated with that. Cybersecurity, that's obviously something that's been even more of an upfront for us, and talk about good work, our IT people have done an excellent job, not only recovering from the cyber attack that we had last year, but putting in a lot of really good system improvements and changes to really help prevent that moving forward. External IT support, so obviously provide a lot of support to other organizations and other municipal units through by agreement. Asset management support, committee support as needed. I mentioned about supporting here from an IT perspective. And then obviously, special projects. One big one was the CTI project, Connect the Innovate project, where we got a significant amount of funding from the federal government to roll out broadband expansion within the municipality, and Chad West, our manager, was really the spearhead on that project. Some of the more recent updates for IT and GIS, so we've recovered from the cybersecurity incident, which wasn't a small undertaking, took several months, and I think we're finally with the approval of our financial statements today. I think we're on the tail end of that and any repercussions to it. But from that, I talked about some of the new systems they put in place. We've got a new firewall, new hardened backup system, which is a much more secure type backup system that prevents any kind of issues moving forward. We've added 24/7 IT security monitoring and response, so managed detection and response system that monitors our system, notices any kind of weird activity that might be going on, or large amounts of data transfers, or it's very sensitive, and it's kind of learned us over the number of months, but it's something that picks up anything that might be happening as an extra level of security. I talked about the database side of things and web development side of things, so we've got a new complaint request tracking system that's been developed and implemented. We've migrated the entire organization to a new SharePoint Document Management System, so that was a big thing with IT, but also involved every member of the staff in terms of moving away from network drives into a new SharePoint system, which allows for better collaboration and sharing of documents than, you know, a traditional type, network drive type system, better security as well. We've added the Data Analyst position, as I mentioned, and then also done a lot of mapping and IT support in advance of the municipal election. The final division within our department, again, a new manager of Financial Reporting, Tyler Honeywood's going to be starting. And then we've got Katrina Roos, Financial Analyst, which many of you would know, and she's going to be presenting here in a little bit on a couple of detailed presentations associated with budgeting and financial reporting. Kevin Wheaton, he's another Financial Analyst, does mostly the capital side of things and the CCBF side of things. Brandon Green, our Accounting Analyst. Kristy Taylor, our Procurement Officer. And then Chris Ritchie, our Funding Analyst, who's involved a lot with managing our external funding sources, but he's also going to be looking after the new VICE program when that gets launched. From a financial reporting responsibility side of things, so this department does everything related to the budget development, obviously in collaboration with all the different departments to work with them on their numbers and their projects that they'd be doing. They also do a significant amount of obviously financial analysis and advisory, so a lot of modeling and things of that nature to kind of help us make some informed decision. They're responsible for putting together the financial statements and bringing those to fruition for being approved by the municipality. All of our debt management, so looking at all of our projects and what would require debt moving forward with various capital projects, and then maintaining, obviously undertaking the debenture process and applying for that, and maintaining those repayments over an ongoing basis. Our municipal insurance policy, we look after that, and we contract with an external provider to kind of help us with that, because it's quite technical, and we want to make sure that we have it right. They work with our auditors to complete the external audit. They handle all of our external grants and funding, so that involves, moving forward's going to be a lot more from the application side of things, but also managing the, you know, the accountability reports for it, and the claim submissions, things of that nature. Compliance reporting, so people from our Audit and Finance Committee would know from the last meeting about how there's a number of compliance reporting elements that have to be done, whether it be for WCB, CRA, things of that nature, that they look after everything associated with that. They also keep a close eye on all of our internal controls. Part of the Audit and Finance Committee's work plan is to maintain our internal controls, and have an eye to developing new ones, maintaining the ones that we have, making recommendations associated with it. Support to our IMSA corporations, so most significantly, that's, you know, Kings Transit and Valley Waste. The resource, particularly the management position, has been involved a lot with supporting those IMSA corporations with both their annual budgeting and any kind of major projects that would be going on. Procurement is something that's fairly new for us in terms of the new procurement role. Added that the year before last, or I guess back in May of 2023, and it's really allowed us to bring tighter controls around our procurement side of things, and really make sure that we're meeting all of our obligations under the Public Procurement Act. This individual that's worked in this position, there's going to be a presentation coming to you in the future about how much more we're doing from our procurement things, and we've got some recommendations about our new procurement policy to update that as well. And then this department is involved a lot with special projects, whether it be Meadowview and doing some financial modeling with that, but there's a lot of, you know, whether it be sewer projects, things of that nature. There's a lot of modeling and input that's provided, most significantly probably by the manager position and Katrina Roos as well. Whoops, wrong button. Recent updates about the financial reporting side of things, so we have added the Procurement Officer and the Funding Analyst. Recently recommended to the previous council a budget management policy, which really put the paper, a lot of the things that are done anyway within the municipality that are really intuitive, but really needed to be tightened up in terms of how we manage the budget moving forward on an annual basis. Preparation of the financial statements, which included the period of IT disruption from the cyber attack, so just concluded that. Been able to obtain clean audit results for the last number of fiscal years. I don't remember that there would have been any not clean audit results, but just for the last number of years. Consolidated the Audit and Finance Committee, it used to be the Audit Committee and Budget and Finance Committee, so brought that consolidation together into one group to kind of help bring into a lot more continuity to that, and eliminate some of the blurred lines that would have been there between the two committees. And then something we're proud of, we've got the Government Finance Officers Award Association Budget Award recognition. For the last three fiscal years, we've received an international award that recognizes the budget that's been approved by council. So just a few other small updates from the Department of Things that are going on. You're familiar with at least two of these. So the Village Asset Management Project is on its way of winding down, and in the new year, we'll be working with the villages to communicate with the residents on that, but that project's been going on for the last year and is nearing the end. The Village Capital Grant Program, one that you're, I'm sure, familiar with from a lot of our meetings we've had recently, and be looking to implement that for the '25, '26 fiscal year. And then in the new year, we're going to do an orientation to kind of bring you up to speed about a divestment process that we're in the middle of right now. The Kings Regional Rehabilitation Center is working towards, and you heard our auditors make a mention to it in the note, creating their own society. We've had the legislation repealed for KRC Act, both the municipality and KRC Board working hand in hand on that to help that come to fruition, so that they have more autonomy and are able to move forward on their own as an independent society. Just real quickly, Katrina's going to talk more about the budgeting side of things in a presentation for her, but the '25, '26 budget is on the horizon. It's a very lengthy process, the development of that, the presentation of it, and council deliberations usually takes our staff and council four to five months to kind of go through that process. A timeline was recommended to the Audit and Finance Committee. They had their first meeting of the new committee last week, and a timeline was proposed to them that is coming to council at the special council meeting later today, which will give you some of the key dates that you should probably put in your calendars and make notes of, because they're outside of the normal meeting schedule in terms of when we will have those presentations for capital and operating budgets and water utility, and when council would deliberate those budgets. So some future presentations, didn't know it would be the same day when I put the slide deck together, but you're going to be getting one here shortly about the budget process and the financial reporting side of things. And then at a later date, probably in the new year in January, our Procurement Officer will be providing a presentation on procurement. And so with that, I just have the recommendation to receive the presentation as provided on December 17th.
Okay, any questions to Director? Okay, so have a motion to receive, moved by Counselor McPherson, seconded by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. Sorry about this, Katrina, but I think I'll call a 10-minute recess, and then, so we got 10 minutes and we'll be back. Sorry about this Katrina, but I think I'll call a 10-minute recess and then, so we get 10 minutes and we'll be back. And we now have a presentation on budget process from Katrina Roofs, our financial analyst.
Good morning. In this presentation, we will walk through the municipality's annual budget process by discussing the timelines, the budget inputs, the presentation and deliberation process, and finally, the budget implementation and the ongoing budget management and accountability reporting. So the municipality is required legally to prepare and approve annual budgets, and a budget is prepared for each of the municipal funds. I'll be providing details on each of the funds in my next presentation, so I'm not going to go into individual funds right now, but we'll do that later today. And the Audit and Finance Committee does oversee some elements of the budget process, including recommending the budget timeline to council annually, and receiving preliminary budget presentations. The next slides will walk through the typical budget process and timeline for the municipality, starting with the September to November period. So the first approval process will be with the Audit and Finance Committee, considering and recommending a budget timeline to council for approval. So that has taken place and will be coming to council later today. And meanwhile, staff will begin to prepare internal working papers, templates are provided to managers and directors, and initial communication is sent to external parties with internal meetings being held with each department. So the fall is really a planning stage for the budget. In December, the budget timeline will be recommended by the Audit and Finance Committee and considered and approved by council. The operating and capital budget meetings will be held with each department and division, and at these meetings, the budgets will be reviewed, the adequacy of preliminary budgets, make adjustments as required, and identify any new projects or resources requirement for the new year. During this time, the Financial Reporting Division continues to analyze historic spending and also compiles information on reserves. In January, the budget really starts to ramp up. Many of the external inputs, such as the assessment role, the education estimate, the fire department budgets are all received. These inputs allow us to move much closer towards a preliminary draft budget. Additionally, during this month, the third quarter accountability report is prepared, which is used as a tool to forecast the current year-end. Draft utility budgets are completed and submitted for review to the Engineering Department, and typically Valley Waste Resource Management and Kings Transit Authority will present their preliminary budgets, either late January or early February. In February, the work is done on the items that will be presented to council and the public. This includes the budget preview presented to Audit and Finance Committee, which will provide an overview of some of the larger budget items, such as the assessment role, the education contribution, and the fire funding and our CMP amounts. We'll also prepare a full budget document, which will be then released in March and will contain a comprehensive account of all budget material. You will see last year's document on our website as an example. In February, the budget inputs are finalized, revenues are balanced against expenses, and capital and special project details are finalized. The IMSA budgets, such as Valley Waste and Kings Transit, are approved in February, and typically around this timeframe, a budget recommendation is made by the Regional Sewer Committee as well. In March and April, the complete draft budget document will be released and available to council and the public. Budgets are presented to council and the Regional Sewer Committee typically recommends the budget to the various councils for approval. During budget presentations, questions of clarification from council are answered, and anything that requires additional information is recorded and responses are prepared in time for council deliberations. At the deliberation meetings, recommended motions are presented by staff for council consideration, covering the approval of each individual budget, the establishment of tax rates, and other fees. Following council approval of the annual budget, a budget debrief will be held with the Audit and Finance Committee to gather feedback on this year's budget process. Our next section of the presentation will focus on some of the budget inputs that are required. So there are a lot of pieces that come together to form the municipality's various budgets. With the three main categories of inputs are the strategic priorities adopted by council, internal requirements, and the external requirements from other organizations. So strategic priorities are used as a guide to ensure that the projects are being proposed aligned with the municipality's overall vision and that these projects help the municipality to achieve its long-term goals. Internal requirements are compiled, which include detailed examination of each department's budget to identify any changes to required staffing levels, core program enhancements, department management, submit budgets, requirements to finance, who then compile the information into the draft budget. And finally, external organizations play a large role within our budget as a significant portion of the municipality's budget flows through to these organizations. So examples include funds for intermunicipal service organizations, the assessment role, fire department budgets, provincial mandatory expenses, such as the educational contribution, and information is gathered by the Finance Department from all of these organizations and incorporated into the budget process. So the first category of budget inputs is, of course, the strategic priorities. So as discussed previously, the municipality's strategic priorities are a primary driver of the proposed budgets. The listed priorities were established in the 2021-24 strategic plan. So within the budget document, there are summaries of which project aligns with each priority, and on each capital project justification sheet, you'll see the related priority is identified. So depending on the timing of a renewed strategic plan, new priorities would be included in the 25-26 budget. Next, we have our internal requirements. So these are things like departmental budgets, operational requirements, staffing complements, and then capital and special projects, and also an analysis of the available reserve funds. And as mentioned previously, some of the external requirements are the assessment role, which feeds into the property tax budget, the fire department budgets, provincial expenses, educational contributions, the IMSA budgets, as well as available external funding for capital projects. So once all the information is gathered, the budgets can be prepared and then presented to council. The budget presentations are scheduled in two sessions, one for the capital budget and one for the operating and utility budgets. These presentations will walk through all aspects of these budgets and will provide a high level of detail for council to have the information required for deliberation. Once council has had an opportunity to review the budget material and receive the presentations, deliberations will take place at another scheduled meeting. This is the time that council debates the proposed budget as presented, and deliberations typically follow the following format. So finance staff may provide a high-level summary of the budget information, a series of recommended motions are brought forward, and then council has the opportunity to pose questions of clarification, and once a motion is tabled, may engage in debate. Budgets are approved by formal motion of council. Once approved, budget implementation, there are some steps that must be taken. So the tax rates and other fees would be updated on the county website and made available to the public. The approved budget book would be finalized and posted to the county website. Approved budgets are provided to each department to be followed for the new fiscal year. External organizations funded through the budget are notified of their funding amount, and budgets are filed as required with other levels of government and regulatory bodies. And finally, a debrief is held with the Audit and Finance Committee to sort of go over the past year, what type of improvements would be needed, how was the process overall. Then we get into our budget management and accountability reporting. So throughout the year, the municipality has several budget accountability procedures in place to ensure that the budget is properly adhered to. On a monthly basis, internal reports are generated and provided to management, and these reports provide the year-to-date balance for each account compared with the year-to-date budget, and also shows the percent of total budget remaining. On a quarterly basis, operating and accountability reports are prepared and presented to the Audit and Finance Committee. These reports provide an update on the spending to date, as well as providing a forecast to the year-end results. Groups of accounts with deviations above a certain threshold are examined and elaborated on in the accountability reports. Any non-budget or budget expenditure over a certain level is either resolved under the terms of the budget management policy or would be brought to council for consideration. So anything that was unplanned in the budget would be either dealt with under the budget management policy or would be brought to council for consideration. And finally, the municipality has a surplus allocation policy, which would mandate the application of any year-end surplus. So at the end of the year, if we have any surplus funds, there is a policy that provides steps that we must follow to allocate those funds. And that brings me to the end of my report.
Thank you, Katrina. Any questions to Katrina on her report? I have one question. The budget deliberations, are they normally just daytime? Are they daytime in the evening? Are they both? And do sometimes they get into weekends also?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So in the past, typically, we schedule one main budget deliberation and then a second one if it's required. And typically, they are daytime meetings. We can schedule evening meetings if it's desired, but typically, they have been in the past during the day, and we've never had a weekend meeting.
I'll use the "be a new" thing for a while, so I just try and get used to what the process is. I'm sure by this time next year, I'll have a pretty good handle on that. Thank you very much, and we need a motion to receive moved by Counselor Gates, seconded by Deputy Mayor Peckford. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Katrina. All right, move on to community grants and Amy Johnstone, Grants and Funding Administrator.
Okay, so good afternoon or morning, I'm not even sure what time it is right now. Mayor Corcoran and counselors, for those that don't know me, I'm Amy Johnstone. I am the Grants and Funding Administrator for the municipality. My role is to administer many of the outgoing funding programs available through the municipality, including the school food funding program, the annual bursary program, and a few other specialized recreation funding programs. The largest part of my role, and what I'm here to introduce to you all today, is the community grants policy and its programs. In addition to myself, Deputy CIO Rob Frost is the other day-to-day go-to for all things grant-related. And of course, the CIO, who has final approval on several of the grant programs. The grant programs wouldn't be where they are today without the hard work of many other staff as well, including our policy and financial analysts. So today, I'll take you through the community grants programs guided by policy FIN 05018. And if you have any questions during the presentation, please feel free to stop me, or there'll be time at the end as well. My voice will stop shaking eventually. It just takes a minute. So the community grants policy was formally adopted in 2018. Prior to this, there were several individual programs offered, but it wasn't until 2018 that these were combined into one overarching policy. So since its creation, the policy has had several revisions in an effort of continuous improvement and to make it as efficient and equitable as possible, while aligning with the demonstrated and emerging needs of organizations while maintaining the municipality's responsibility to ratepayers. Some of the changes over the last few years aimed at making the process more clear and straightforward for the applicants while updating accountability requirements, which help limit the risk for the municipality. Anytime updates to the policy are discussed, it's important to ensure the policy's purpose is reflected. The purpose states, "The municipality of the County of Kings believes in supporting the work of nonprofit community organizations, providing programs, infrastructure, services, and events that align with the municipality's strategic plan." Per policy, grants may only be awarded to eligible organizations, which at the date of application, are registered as one of the following. Any nonprofit club, association, society, or organization registered and in good standing with the Nova Scotia Registry of Joint Stocks. Registered Canadian charities and legions. Towns, villages, and First Nations governments within the county, or a school within the county affiliated with AVRCE or CSAP. Some other highlights of the policy state, "The municipality does not provide financial support for any application promoting or supporting any political organizations. Faith-based organizations are eligible to apply for funding through council grants to organizations or Community Hall Assistance Program with projects or initiatives relating to the community space available for public use. The municipality is not to be considered the primary source of funding for any program, service, event, or initiative. The municipality provides funding for specific eligible programs, services, events, or infrastructure. It does not contribute to general fundraising endeavors." Committed to working towards accessibility for all people within the municipality of the County of Kings, if by 2030, the program, service, event, or initiative is not deemed accessible per the current prescribed public sector standards, the municipality will not provide funding support. Grant funding for professional fees will be capped at 25% of the total combined professional fees to a maximum of $10,000. Examples of these fees would include legal, accounting, engineering, planning, or grant writing. In-kind goods and services may count for up to 50% of the applicant's contribution. In-kind goods and services may count for up to 50% of the applicant's contribution. Retroactive funding is not available, and grants will not be awarded if projects previously funded have not been completed, or if accountability requirements have not been met. The municipality provides community grants through the following programs. Park Playground and Trail Assistance. Graduation Event Assistance. Community Recreation Programming Assistance. Community Festivals and Special Events. Counselor Grants to Organizations. Community Hall Assistance, and the Kings Vision Grant. I'll go into a little more detail on all these programs in the coming slides. Organizations may apply to Counselor Grants to Organizations, or for separate initiatives, up to any two of the other available programs within the policy. I will note that the Graduation Event Assistance is only available to the five high schools and does not prevent those schools from applying for other grants within the policy. Multi-year funding may be awarded, but will require annual approval of council, and are subject to annual submission of budgets and deliverables. In rendering a decision on a multi-year request, council shall consider potential impacts on subsequent fiscal years or future councils. Submission deadlines for the grant programs are shown here. All applications submitted by these deadlines are reviewed for completeness. If any required information is missing, I'll reach out to the organizations directly to discuss. For each program, except Counselor Grants to Organizations and Kings Vision Grant, a team of staff is selected to review and score each application, using the scoring criteria clearly outlined in the application forms. These scores are then compiled, ranked, and funding allocated using the approved program budgets. The CIO will administer the Park Playground and Trail Grant, Graduation Event Assistance, Community Recreation Programming Assistance, Community Festivals and Special Events, and Community Hall Assistance. Council will administer Counselor Grants to Organizations and the Kings Vision Grants. As for funding and accountability, the detail of financial information required from applicants will be proportionate to the amount of the award. A pre-funding terms and conditions letter, or a more formal contribution agreement, may be prepared and sent to the organization to review and sign back before any initial funding goes out. This is usually the case for multi-year funding awards, or larger-scale projects with one-time funding, to ensure both parties understand and agree. All awards of $7,500 or less will be dispersed in full once awarded. Grants of this size are required to submit a summary of how the funds were used to meet the accountability requirements and close the grant. Awards of more than $7,500 are dispersed as 80% once approved, and the final 20% after the project is complete and accountability requirements have been met. Accountability requirements for grants over $7,500 vary depending on the amount of the award and other applicable terms and conditions. Specific accountability requirements are communicated directly to each grant applicant, recipient in this case. Generally, this includes a requirement to provide the actual project financing and a statement of certified expenses. Section 3.44 of the policy explains that, in the case of single-year grants, a grant must be spent for the sole purpose for which it was awarded within 12 months of awarding. If grants have not been fully expended within the 12 months following the award, a written status update to the municipality must be provided to evaluate the continued viability. The decisions shall solely rest with the municipality regarding carrying forward of approved amounts for dispersment in the subsequent fiscal year. At no point shall funding be carried forward more than 24 months after award. During the term of an extension, the grant recipient is ineligible to apply for additional funding. Should the final accountability show a project has not been completed as detailed in the application, funding will be adjusted to reflect the actual revenues and expenditures to the maximum allowable funding limit for the program, or where applicable, the percentage identified in a funding agreement. In instances where the municipality has advanced funds in excess of the percent agreed to, recipients will be invoiced for the difference, and failure to pay that invoice will render the organization ineligible until payment is made. So, that brings me to the end of the main highlights of the community grant policy, but possibly, the most important takeaway for you all today is this website address. countyofkings.ca/grants is where you and the public can find all things grant-related, including the policy with all the details of the programs, a listing of the application deadlines, the application forms, which are available in early January in both printable and fillable forms, as well as historical grant/award records. Per the MGA, these are required to be posted publicly each year. Additionally, I can be reached by email anytime at grants@countyofkings.ca, and I'm available to discuss grant-related questions, concerns, even ideas of things that organizations may want to start working towards anytime. We'll now take a look at the actual programs available through this policy, beginning with Community Festivals and Special Events. To build pride and celebrate communities by showcasing achievements, culture, and heritage, or to commemorate milestone anniversaries, the Festivals and Special Events Grant assists community organizations with the cost of festival spares and special events, marking civic or national holidays or other noteworthy events. To be eligible, the event must be open to the general public, be designed to serve our residents, and recognize the unique character of communities across the county. Preference will be given to events in the Kings' boundary and those with no admission fee. There are two categories of funding available through this grant. The first is major events. To be included in this category, the event must have an expected attendance of 5,000 or more for the duration of the event that happens over multiple consecutive days. Maximum assistance available is up to 2,000 per day to a maximum of 10,000 for the entire Eligible days must have at least four hours of programming provided or endorsed by the host organization. The second category is festival spares or special events. Maximum assistance available is up to 25% of estimated cost to a maximum of 1,000 per day, or 2,000 for the entire event. Applications are due beginning April 1st. I will note, this policy does state that sporting events, tournaments, and training camps are not eligible. Next, we have the Community Hall Assistance Program. So, to assist with capital repairs and renovations of halls, this grant contributes to the ongoing preservation of halls that are available for community use. Priority for funding is given to those projects that are directly related or attached to the hall structure, and address structural safety and integrity. Maximum assistance available for capital project renovation or upgrade is up to 50% of cost to a maximum of $5,000. If the renovation or upgrade is to enhance accessibility, up to an additional $2,500 may be available. There's also an operational assistance portion of this grant available, of up to 50% of the total annual operating cost to a maximum of $1,000. Applicants are eligible for both capital and operational funding, but separate itemized budgets for the operating and capital will have to be included in the application. Additional eligibility requirements for this program include, the hall must be open to the public. The applicant must have the authority to manage the property through ownership or long-term lease of at least 10 years. Halls must provide current fire insurance. Confirmation by the municipal fire inspector that the hall is compliant with the Fire Safety Act is also required. And for workwear building permit may be required. Proof of permit is required before any funds will be released, and any unpaid funds from the municipality will not be released until the permits are closed. Application deadline for this program is May 1st. Next, we have the Community Recreation Programming Assistance. This fund assists community organizations providing recreation programming to individuals within the County of Kings. I will note that the most recent policy updates opened this up to include programming for all ages. It's no longer limited to youth-focused programs only. Funding is available of up to 100% of net program costs per program, to a maximum of 50% of the total program's cost. This grant has a maximum award of $10,000 to any one organization. Application deadline for this program is May 1st. Now, on to Counselor Grants to Organizations. Counselors may support requests for community organizations that are not otherwise eligible for funding through another grant program. This is a unique program in that counselors allocate funds directly to applications to support community initiatives. Dispersment of these funds is solely at the discretion of the individual counselors, with payments issued to the recipient by the municipality. Maximum assistance available is $7,500 to any one project. Organizations that have received funding from any other program under the community grants policy are ineligible to receive funding under the Counselor Grants to Organizations Fund. This program differs from other programs, in that applicants can apply for up to 100% of the cost of the project. Applications are due no later than June 1st each year. So, how this program actually works is counselors equally share a budget, which is determined annually during budget deliberations. All applications received will be compiled and provided electronically to counselors after the June 1st deadline. Each counselor can then review and determine the amount of support they wish to provide to any of the applications. I'll give a deadline, allowing usually a week or two where counselors can manually make their allocations on a large poster in the counselor office. This is done so counselors can see all the allocations, to ensure applications do not receive more funding than has been requested. After this deadline, I'll review the allocations and prepare check requisitions to be sent for 100% of the awards. Counselors may select one or more applications from any district to receive funding. Next, we have the Graduation Event Assistance Program, which was just recently added to the community grant policy. Celebrating the achievements of graduating students at each of the five high schools located within the county by assisting with costs of graduation events. Funds may be used towards events for graduates, such as Safe Grad, Prom, Prom Parade, et cetera. Other funding for graduation-related events... No, sorry, I've read that wrong. No other funding for graduation-related events will be awarded through any other alternative program. Funding of up to $1,000 for each of the five high schools in Kings County is available. Application deadline is May 1st. And I do reach out to each of those schools to remind that this fund exists and seek their application, basically. Next is the Kings Vision Grant. These grants contribute to the municipality's vision of being a community of communities where all people belong. This grant assists organizations undertaking major capital projects that align with one of the five key strategic priorities of the municipality's strategic plan, which are strong communities, environmental stewardship, economic development, good governance, and financial sustainability. Maximum assistance available to any one initiative is 50% of the cost of a single project. This grant does have a minimum request of $25,000. Additional items related to this program are that projects must be ready to commence within two years of the application date. Kings Vision Grants are not awarded for operational costs. Organizations awarded a Kings Vision Grant are ineligible to apply to this program for 12 months following the completion of a program, project, initiative. Applications are due no later than April 1st each year. The way this program works is that all applications received by the April 1 deadline are compiled and provided electronically to all of council via the secure site. Each council member can then review the applications and decide how they would like to see the entire budget for this program allocated. I'll supply a fillable form and give a deadline, allowing time for each council member to make their allocations. This form will be returned to me directly when I'll compile all submissions and average the allocations. This average will then be brought back and presented to you all at Committee of the Hall as the staff recommendation. Council can then discuss and award the final funding amounts, as well as any conditions to be applied. And finally, we have the Park Playground and Trail Assistance Grant. This fund supports the maintenance of active living infrastructure and capital projects under $50,000. These grants support communities through well-maintained parks, public parks, playgrounds, trails, and assets to improve opportunities and promote active living. Funding is to support capital aspects of development and/or expansion and maintenance, excluding the purchase of land for future development. Maximum assistance is broken into two groupings. Community Parks and Playgrounds. So, capital funding is available for up to 50% of cost to a maximum of $7,500 per park or playground. Maintenance is also available at up to 50% of cost to a maximum of $7,500 per park or playground. For trails, capital funding is available for up to 50% of cost to a maximum of $25,000. And maintenance funding is available at up to 50% of cost to a maximum of $20,000. Applications for this program are due no later than April 1st each year. There are a few other notes related to this program. Where the trail involves crown land, the applicant must have a letter of authority from the appropriate jurisdiction having the authority. Proof of liability insurance of at least $2 million is required for all parks, playgrounds, and trails. I'll note, the development of new parks, playgrounds, and trails are considered strong communities-based capital projects. Projects valued at or above $50,000 will be directed to the Kings Vision Grant Program. So, those are all the grant programs offered through the community grants policy, FIN 05018. Just one final note, I will be hosting two in-person grant information sessions out in community in January, as well as one online session for members of the public, or organizations, or any of you interested in learning more about what the municipality has to offer in terms of funding supports. I'll be sending the detailed invitation out to you all once the second location is confirmed. I'll also be sharing the invitation via our social platforms, in our e-newsletter, and sending an email blast directly to any organizations' contacts that I currently have. Yeah, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I would suggest that any questions you may have about specific organizations or projects be better discussed in a little more detail outside of this orientation presentation. That's it.
Thank you, Amy. Counselor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Just for clarification, are there any allocations for hiring summer staff for recreation, i.e. summer camp?
Yeah, so, through the Community Recreation Programming Assistance, staff costs can be included in those, yeah.
Counselor Harding.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. You said... I don't know if I got this straight. Did you say you was going out into the communities, or just one community somewhere to have a...
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Harding. No, so, this year, so annually, over the last few years, probably the last five years or so, since this policy really was put in place, we have been going out annually somewhere. So, this year, we're looking at, I have the Port Williams Community Hall booked right now, and I'm looking at the Kingston-Aylesford direction right now, and just waiting on date confirmation, to do two in-person sessions in the evenings. And then, I'll also host an online session, so folks can watch that, or join in, either or. And then, I'm reachable all the time, too, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. I do have one question.
Sure.
Now, on the schools, so, Amy, each high school would have a maximum of $1,000 grant, so, that, they could make two $500 grants if they wanted, or five $200 ones, or one student could get $1,000. That's their choice. The school gets a maximum $1,000. The school gets a maximum of a thousand dollars. Am I correct in that?
Not quite. We do have a bursary program as well that I administer, so that is, will offer a thousand dollar bursary to a student from each of the high schools as well. That program's a little different than this one. This one is specifically for graduation event assistance, so whether it's the grads, the proms, the prom parades, there seems to be all kinds of different things popping up now, safe grads. So each school, I don't want to say is allocated, but we do have a bu- generally have a budget to provide a thousand dollars to each of the schools for one of those types of events. So the application is quite basic, like we're really not looking to evaluate what they're doing, just that they're doing something and this is how we can support those. Yeah.
Thank you for clarifying that. So we need a motion to receive the presentation, please. Moved by Counselor Best, seconded by Counselor Allen. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay. The mover didn't vote. Your button's not working, Mr. Counselor. Motion carried. All right, so now we're on financial reporting. Katrina Roofs again, financial analyst.
Hello again. My presentation now is going to focus on financial reporting, so you would have had the financial statements this morning presented at a high level by the auditors. Those are the statements that we prepare internally and are audited by Grand Thornton. So this presentation is sort of on the background of that, the financial reporting requirements, the different funds of the municipality, and things like that. So we're going to be doing some training on the financial reporting, and we're going to cover required accounting standards, some key terminology, fund accounting overview, the different municipal funds, the consolidation process, and the financial statement presentation. So we'll start with the accounting standards. The municipality, as a government body, must follow public sector accounting standards. These standards are developed by CPA Canada and are a requirement for all government organizations within Canada. The standards are comprehensive and provide rules around how to account for specific types of transactions, assets, liabilities, and also guide financial statement presentation and required note disclosure. The municipality follows these standards when preparing our financial statements, and these are the standards that the auditor confirms compliance with when issuing their audit opinion. In addition to the P S A standards, Nova Scotia also has a financial reporting and accounting manual referred to as F R A M. These are the accounting guidelines which municipalities must adhere to and which are put in place by the province. The F R A M provides guidance beyond the P S A standards and focuses more on accounting policies and reporting requirements, specifically the system for accounting and reporting, different accounting policies that are requirements, financial reporting requirements, and the municipal audit requirements. We're now going to move into some key concepts and terminology which will explain the basis of accounting and fund accounting. So revenue and expenditures represent transactions occurring during a specific period of time and provide the basis for the statement of operations. So revenues are any increases in economic resources either by way of inflow or enhancement of assets or reduction of liabilities. So here, our examples would include property taxes, permits and licenses, grant funds, utility billings. And expenditures are the opposite of that, so they are decreases in economic resources by way of outflows or reductions of assets. So things like office supplies, insurance, salaries, things like that. Next, we'll move on to the statement of financial position, which houses our assets, liabilities, and net assets. They're all measures of financial figures at a specific point in time and are the basis of the statement of financial position. So assets are economic resources controlled by an entity as a result of past transactions or events and from which future economic benefits may be obtained. And assets are broken down into three categories. We have financial assets, so things like cash or accounts receivable. Non-financial assets are things like inventory or prepaid expenses. And tangible capital assets are things like our buildings and our vehicles. Liabilities are the obligations of an entity arising from past transactions or events, so basically anything that you're going to have to settle with future economic benefits, things like our long-term debt, accounts payable, things like that. Next, we have equity. This is a bit harder to explain. Private companies measure the difference between assets and liabilities as equity, and equity measures the amount the owners of the company would have invested into the company and also any income that has been retained within the company. With government and not-for-profit organizations, the terminology is slightly different, and the term net assets is commonly, commonly, commonly used or accumulated surplus. And on the capital funds, you'll see the term investment in capital assets. But regardless of the terminology, equity is always just the difference between your assets and your liabilities. Our next section will focus on fund accounting, so as required by both P S A's and F R A M, the municipality uses a method of accounting called fund accounting. And fund accounting is used by not-for-profit organizations and government entities, and the basis is that individual funds are created and segregated for accounting purposes. Fund accounting groups together transactions and accounts related to similar activities, and each fund has its own revenue expenditures, assets, liabilities, and its own net asset balance. Within a government organization, typical funds would include your operating capital utility and reserve funds. And each fund has a self-balancing set of accounts, and non-consolidated financial statements can be prepared for each of the funds. We're going to walk through the municipal funds on the next slides. So the municipality of the County of Kings has eight funds. We have our general operating fund, which is of course the largest, and the general capital fund goes along with it. Then we have the greened water operating fund and the greened water capital fund. We have the regional sewer operating fund and the regional sewer capital fund. And then we have our two sets of reserves, the operating and the capital. So the general operating fund is one of the main funds of the municipality. This is the fund where activities associated with the operations of the municipality are recorded. Typical assets and liabilities recorded here are of a short-term nature and are related to the day-to-day transactions of the municipality. The general operating fund budget is deliberated and approved annually by council, and for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, the budget totaled sixty-five point three million dollars, which represents the largest budget among the different municipal funds. Next, we have general capital, so the capital fund deals with those items that are more long-term in nature, things like capital assets, long-term debt, and things that will provide a benefit to the municipality over a number of years. The general capital fund budget is deliberated and approved annually by municipal council, and for the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year, the total capital budget was just over twenty-five million dollars. This is not including the regional sewer or the greened water utility capital. Next, we have the greened water utility, which is a regulated utility under the Nova Scotia Utility and Review Board, and there is an operating and capital fund for the greened water utility. These funds track all the activities specifically related to that utility. The greened water utility budget is approved annually by council, and specific financial information is required to be submitted through to the U A R B each year. Any rate changes must also be approved through the U A R B by way of a rate hearing. In twenty-four, twenty-five, the utility had an operating budget of just over a million dollars and a capital budget of seven point three million dollars. Next, we have the regional sewer system, which consists of the regional treatment plant in New Minas and a trunk collection system extending from Colberg to the New Minas Greenwich border. Also included is a collection from parts of North Kenful. The regional system is a partnership among the municipality, the town of Kenful, the village of New Minas, and PepsiCo. So similar to the greened water utility, the regional sewer also has its own funds based on operating and capital, where all activity specific to the system is recorded. The regional sewer committee provides oversight of the regional sewer system and approves the annual operating and capital budgets. In the twenty-four, twenty-five year, the regional sewer budget was just over two million dollars for operating with a capital budget of nine point two million dollars. Next, we have our first reserve, so the operating reserve. Reserves can be thought of similar to a savings account where money is set aside for future expenditures or projects. These funds work in conjunction with the general operating fund typically and the general capital fund. And within each class of reserve, operating and capital, there are individual reserves. So for example, in the operating reserve, we have thirteen active reserves, such as a general operating fund, but we also have a reserve for things like election expenses, a reserve for economic development initiatives, a reserve for any unpaid grants and things like that. And each individual reserve holds funds designated for a specific purpose. There is an approved reserve policy, which can be found on the county's website, that provides more details on the rules and regulations surrounding reserves, as well as a detailed breakdown of the many different reserves and their purposes. At March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the municipality had operating reserves with a combined balance of fifteen point four million dollars. So similar to the operating reserves, the municipality also has capital reserves with the specific purpose being to provide future funding for future capital acquisitions. These funds are also governed by the reserve policy and do require council approval for all activity. At March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, the capital reserves had a combined balance of twenty-five point seven million dollars. Our next section will focus on the consolidation of funds, which is the process of combining all of the funds. So the municipality is annually required to submit audited consolidated financial statements to the province, and consolidation involves combining all of the municipal funds into a single set of financial statements, and all balances are combined and any inter-fund activity for the year is eliminated. Along with the municipal funds, the consolidated financial statements also include those entities that the municipality is deemed to have control of as guided by the public sector accounting policies. So currently, these entities include Kings Transit, Valley Waste, the Kings Regional Rehabilitation Center, Valley Community Fiber Network, and the Valley Regional Enterprise Network. So the financial statements that were presented this morning would have included all of the municipal funds as well as these organizations. So our next section will focus on the financial statement presentation, which basically takes the individual components, revenue, expenses, assets, and liabilities, and groups them into readable and useful financial statements. So there are four main financial statements included in the municipality set of statements. First, we have our statement of operations, which will show your revenue and expenses for the year. Next, we have the statement of financial position, which will have your assets and liabilities and your equity. Then we have the statement of cash flows, which shows the change in your cash position for year over year. And then the statement of net assets shows the change in your equity position for the year. So along with the four financial statements, you'll notice, too, that there is no disclosure required, and P S A sets out very strict rules surrounding minimum levels of disclosure that are required for each specific type of item. And that brings me to the end of my very riveting overview of accounting, so. If anybody has any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Katrina. Any questions to Katrina? Counselor Gates.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. A lot of information. Just a quick question with surpluses that are not earmarked, tagged, or allocated for specific. Is that held in general or is that invested in G I C or...
Through you, Mayor, to Counselor Gates. Currently, it's held in the general operating reserve fund. There is a surplus allocation policy which stipulates where the reserve will go to, so the first item that it would cover would be if there had been budgeted long-term debt in the year. If we have surplus funds that could be applied against that debt, they would be, they would go to there first so that we would lower our future debt burden. But as for if they're held in the bank or if they're held in G I Cs, currently, all of our funds are held just in the bank.
Any other questions? I'd like to have a mover and a secondary, please. Moved by Counselor McPherson, seconded by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. Thank you, Katrina. And we'll move on now to strategy for belonging. Brittany Trainer, manager, community development, please.
Good morning, mayor and council. My name is Brittany Trainer, and my pronouns are she/her. I'm a first-generation settler Canadian, and I'm the manager of community development here at the municipality. I'm here this morning to provide you with a high-level overview of the municipality's equity and anti-racism plan entitled Toward Equity and Diversity: A Strategy for Belonging in the Municipality of the County of Kings. The municipality has been working hard in the area of community inclusion and anti-racism for nearly two decades. Interestingly enough, when I first started working in the region after graduating university, I worked with a community organization that was supporting the municipality in responding to the needs of the African Nova Scotian population in early two thousand and eight, and I ended up joining the municipality as staff almost a decade later. The early work of the municipality was framed around its obligations as a signatory to the Canadian Coalition of Municipalities Against Racism and Discrimination. The Coalition, now named the Coalition of Inclusive Municipalities, was a response to work done by UNESCO to address and redress social marginalization and exclusion present in Canadian civil society. Currently, there are about a hundred and twenty member municipalities across the country. A few years after joining the Coalition, municipal council struck its inaugural Race Relations and Anti-Discrimination Committee and adopted its first action plan for ending racism and discrimination in the County of Kings in two thousand and twelve. While both work products were examples of best practices at the time, as Maya Angelou reminds us, when we know better, we can do better, and in two thousand and eighteen, the municipality's Race Relations Committee evolved to be the Diversity Committee, and in two thousand and twenty-one, municipal council adopted Toward Equity and Diversity: A Strategy for Belonging in the County of Kings. As you may recall from Admin oh one, oh one six, the administration of standing and advisory committees of council policy, all committees of council are required to develop annual work plans. The Diversity Committee's two thousand and twenty work plan developed in the fall of two thousand and nineteen prioritized the creation of a new strategy for community inclusion. Moreover, through the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one operating budget, municipal council acknowledged the desire of the committee by financially resourcing the project. What followed was an extensive community consultation and engagement process that was trauma-informed, human-centered, and most of all, required sincerity and humility from the municipality. We were fortunate that community members trusted us with their lived experiences and often painful realities. We heard countless stories of social isolation, exclusion, and yes, racism and discrimination. We had public engagement sessions for those who felt comfortable participating. We had public engagement sessions for those who felt comfortable participating and hundreds of individual conversations with folks who were not. Through it all, thousands of personal narratives were represented. The process was rigorous, and at 13 months, it took much longer than the initial seven months we had budgeted for it, but it was worth it. At each stage of the engagement process, staff returned to council to share what community was telling us and to affirm and reaffirm council support for the direction the work was heading, the direction community was leading us. Then on December 7th, during Human Rights Week in 2021, municipal council adopted Toward Equity and Diversity: A Strategy for Belonging in the Municipality of the County of Kings. There are four main components to the strategy for belonging that I would like to touch on today. The first is the council commitment to the leadership and trust placed in the municipality by the community of communities we are privileged to represent and serve. Through this commitment, council recognizes the importance of and affirms its support to the necessary work outlined in the strategy for belonging. Sorry, I just need to take a sip. There's a cold going around this place. As a colonial, or as people and as a colonial government, council also acknowledges the range of privilege present around this table and present in the municipality as an organization. Importantly, council also assumes critical responsibility for addressing and redressing harms and oppression that it has historic, has a history of directly participating in or enabling by doing nothing. Rooted in community wisdom, the strategy identifies three lenses through which all actions are to be reviewed. It also establishes six pillars to organize over 100 internal and external actions that through council's commitment to the work by adopting the strategy, we are mandated to make meaningful progress on over the next five years. Reconciliation and Mi'kmaq Treaty rights lens. This lens is fundamental to recognizing that Nova Scotia is on the unceded and ancestral territory of Mi'kmaq. Using this Indigenous rights lens means we prioritize actions and policies that enable the Mi'kmaq people to access services safely and in a way that meets their needs. It's about supporting self-determination and decolonization. Complementing Indigenous rights with reconciliation ensures that we use the Truth and Reconciliation Commission's calls to action, in particular, the several calls to actions that directly pertain to municipal governance as guidance for our action. The African diaspora and anti-black racism and reparations lens is an acknowledgement of the need for reparations while acknowledging that the African continent is the birthplace of humanity with the oldest civilizations, and that democracy, cooperative economics, art, entertainment, modern education, and medicine are rooted in African wisdom and were all too often built off the backs of African-descended people. And that the centuries-long displacement, disenfranchisement, lack of access and opportunity, and the celebration of heritage and contribution and systemic implications impacting current realities of persons of African descent, especially African Nova Scotians, whose ancestral roots have been in this province for over 400 years. The equity, diversity, and inclusion lens asks that we actively include all voices and identities and act to empower and support those who are typically excluded. We consider how systemic barriers and internal biases such as racism, misogyny, homophobia, transphobia, ableism, ageism, and other various forms of stigma are embedded in Western planning and policy processes, and thus, many people and voices are not reflected in the policies that shape our residents' experiences. This lens includes a specific focus on socio-economic barriers, including age and geography, ability and access for persons with disabilities, racism, racialization, and barriers faced by people of color, gender, and sexuality, as well as culture which encompasses diverse traditions, food, clothing, language, and living heritage that enrich the municipality. The strategy's pillars provide order to all of its intended actions. Each of the 100 actions falls within one of the pillars. Like the lenses, all are responses to what we heard through community engagement. Demonstrating leadership and enhancing representation is about how the municipality enhances its own capacity to do better, equipped, to be better equipped to achieve the goals of the plan. Economic empowerment focuses on creating opportunities for equitable economic development, utilizing the municipality's spending power, and fostering an environment of inclusive entrepreneurship within the county. Truth, awareness, and advocacy is about how the municipality facilitates a broader public conversation and communicates with partners and participates and prioritizes truth-telling and advocacy. Cultural celebration and reflection of diversity. Culture is always changing. This pillar is about creating a platform for sharing culture and promoting the diversity present in the region. Creating safe spaces, land, and built environment. The municipality is a steward of land and community facilities. This pillar is about how spaces and land are used to manage and enhance equity, representation, and protect cultural resource. Access and equitable service delivery. As a service provider for residents, this pillar is about removing barriers and promoting access to underserved communities or demographics. It's about how the municipality can support those delivering services that target underserved As a leader in this work, the County of Kings has many resources in place to implement what we are trying to do and to continue to co-create it with community. This project is a process, not a product. Respectful stewardship of the reality shared with us during consultation is a sacred obligation we have to everyone in community. A key element of the strategy is that implementation is a shared responsibility between council and staff. Although we have extremely talented staff dedicated to supporting implementation, we each, staff and council alike, have personal and collective work to do. Also contained within the strategy is a commitment to measure its effectiveness qualitatively and quantitatively. Data changes minds, but stories change hearts. Both are necessary. Nationally and provincially, and indeed locally, society is changing. According to Stats Canada projections, by 2036, 24% to 30% of the Canadian population is expected to be made up of newcomers. Achieving a sense of belonging in community is an inherent human need and is directly related to our sense of well-being and overall quality of life. Plainly, MIT researchers have found that social isolation has the same health impacts on individuals as prolonged hunger. And U of T researcher Jeff McDonald also reports that social exclusion is experienced in the brain the same way we experience physical pain. Changing demographics means changing community needs. In order to adequately steward public resources, municipalities must give consideration to the full range of lived experience present in our communities. Beyond that, the municipality also has a statutory requirement to file an equity, diversity, and inclusion plan with the province on or before April 1, 2025, as mandated by the Dismantling Racism and Hate Act. As you might suspect, the municipality has earned a reputation as a leader in both thought and importantly, action when it comes to equity and inclusion work. The strategy for belonging has been recognized as a best practice by multiple provincial human rights commissions across Canada, New Brunswick's Commissioner on Anti-Racism, and is also used as a case study in responding to social marginalization and exclusion at UBC's School of Public Health. But as nice as the accolades are to receive, they don't mean it's time for us to rest. Consistent forward momentum matters today just as much as it did when we started nearly 20 years ago. As I mentioned earlier, the more work we do, the more we realize just how much work we still have to do. In the very near term, we need to submit the strategy to the province to meet our statutory obligations as prescribed by the Act, and we're also a little past the midpoint of the implementation plan, so it's time to review where we are and make sure our priorities are aligned with the community and organization needs. As the late great Senator Justice Murray Sinclair taught us, "Education got us into this mess, and education is what will get us out of it." Training for staff and council is something we always seek to provide. As communities evolve, the municipality needs to evolve too. Currently, staff are working on a training schedule in the new year that includes treaty rights and municipal obligations to Indigenous peoples, as well as the origins of race, racism, and anti-black racism. Another opportunity for engagement in this work is for council to feel totally welcome in attending events that the municipality hosts. You heard earlier about our plans for African Heritage Month, and I can assure you that it is an event not to be missed. It is always well-intended, youth-led, and it is a great opportunity for learning. We also have a significant volume of policy work that needs to be done because when we are not being intentionally inclusive, we risk being exclusive regardless of intent. Before I get to the recommendation, I do want to pause and acknowledge that I know and understand this work can seem overwhelming, even daunting. I want to affirm to you that staff are here to help you navigate and thrive with this rapidly evolving portfolio. It's okay if you don't understand. It's okay if you don't know what to do. Lastly, I want to welcome you all on this journey. We are in it together. This work is rarely easy, but I promise you that it is worth it. And that brings me to the recommendation that Committee of the Whole received the strategy for belonging presentation as provided December 17th, 2024.
Great. Thank you, Brittany. Any questions to Brittany on her presentation? Counselor Sappington.
I want to give you and your staff and everyone that's involved with the Diversity Committee a huge kudos, and I can say that I've never been prouder to be at this table than to be part of the work going forward that you are doing.
Thank you, Counselor McPherson.
Thank you. Through you, Mayor. I would like to reiterate the comments made by Counselor Sappington. Thank you very much for the very educational and informative presentation. It's nice to see and to hear that King's County has a strong reputation of leadership over the past 20 years in this area. Evidently, there's lots more work to do, but it's certainly refreshing to see and hear the leadership in this room of your group, and we look forward to engaging in your processes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Brittany. And so I'll need a motion to receive the presentation. Move by Counselor Sappington. Second by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay. Motion carried. And now our, thank you again, Brittany, and now Regional Recreation Facility being presented
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good morning, council. So we'll be talking about regional recreation complex kind of in two parts today. This will kind of be a general summary, and then we'll get into some further details later in our second meeting today. And this will certainly be a recap for returning council and hopefully some new information for new counselors. So the regional recreation complex, I'll just give you a little bit of a summary as to the discussions that have occurred to date. So this conversation started back in the spring of 2021, and partners agreed to proceed with a study to look at the feasibility of a regional recreation complex. At the time, the partners was all four municipalities began the conversation, and Wolfville, Kenville, and the municipality decided to proceed with the study. So the, an RFP was released in the summer of 2021 to hire a consultant to do a review of the possibility of a regional recreation complex, which was awarded in fall of 2021. And then fall of 2021 and into the winter of 2022, consultation and research occurred by the consultant. In summer 22, the draft report was received by the working group, and of course, a little bit of back and forth with the consultant on additional information. And then the full draft report, including site information, was received in the fall of 22 and was presented in camera to all three of the partnering municipal units. In November of 22, the three partners agreed to proceed with further investigation, consultation, and discussion. In March of 23, there was a presentation to a joint council meeting to all three municipalities to receive the public version of the feasibility report, and that the public version is accessible online. And of course, for council as well, there's also a council version that's available in the secure site. And the only difference is really location information that's included in the council version. In the spring of 23, meetings were held with the primary landowners, which we'll discuss further later today. And of course, there was additional gathering information about what other recreation complexes in the region look like in comparison, how they're structured, how they're funded, all that type of thing. There's been general discussions with other levels of government kind of all along the way, and again, interest from other levels of government. Acadia has certainly been involved in the discussion throughout the process from fairly early days until even a few weeks ago, there's some additional discussions with them. And as you'll, as we'll talk about further, they have a real interest in what the municipalities may do from a facilities perspective. There's been preliminary, as I already mentioned, preliminary discussions with other levels of government mainly due to funding. And then in spring of 2024, further discussions with landowners. And decision points have been brought to the previous council and to other councils, the other two partner councils at this point. So just for your awareness, if you haven't seen the public report or the council version, what the consultant brought back in the report is that the region could be looking at something as such. The concept was an aquatics facility as kind of the anchor component of a facility. That aquatic side would be about 39,000 square feet, and it would include an eight-lane, an eight-lanes pool, leisure pool, and a therapy pool, so what they call three different tanks. Would also include a gymnasium, and again, we'll speak to some of the popularity of the sports, and again, the report does a good job of talking about current access to facilities in the area. Also in the gymnasium would be a walking track, which of course is one of the, the most requested things when you talk about recreation. The facility would also have multipurpose space, so you know, again, of about 5,000 square feet for all kinds of community events that may occur. Certainly, we know that we get lots of requests for different community groups to have a space. And then of course, just adding on other support and amenity spaces, and the total square foot, footprint of this concept would be just under 75,000 square feet. That would be what was considered a phase one. So again, phase one was basically aquatics and gymnasium with multipurpose, and then there's the potential of a phase two. Phase two would be an arena or arenas. That side of it is certainly dependent on a lot of factors, and again, if you read through the report, you'll see that there's discussion about current facilities and what they may choose or choose not to do in the future. So location considerations. The CAO and myself have had meetings with different landowners. The CAO and myself have had meetings with different landowners or parcels identified in the report, and again, we'll speak to that later today. We've had discussions on external funding. When it comes to location considerations, it may be a requirement that the municipality owns the land. So again, consideration on what we would do if we were to look to proceed. And then, of course, such a facility would create the addition of other potential local development, potential for housing in the area, and other growth opportunities. Operations and governance, a lot of discussion around how such a facility could be operated and governed. And we looked at many different models. We looked at the other models that are currently occurring in other parts of the province and much further abroad. Generally, the thought would be that it would be an intermunicipal service agreement. And that... Or, sorry, we looked at three different options: intermunicipal service agreement, non-arms-length municipal agency or operation, or also a potential for private-public partnerships. The recommendation that we heard from others is that municipally-owned and operated or an operating ring with an entity would be the best model or recommended model to proceed, and that community board governance can be problematic, which we've heard from other areas of the province. From aquatics needs standpoint, and this is important to add for your information, so currently, as you know, the winter swimming in the valley is limited to Acadia and 14-Wing. And what the report shows is that even with those two facilities, there's not enough indoor aquatics available in the county. They also, just so as a note, they also included the Waterville Pool, which we use for... But basically, it doesn't really change the numbers. And if you've ever tried to access either of those facilities, you know that the access to community is quite limited. The current status of the pools, so Waterville and Acadia Pools are both nearing the end of their life cycle, and I'll talk a little bit about that further on as well. But again, both have been in place for substantial time and need significant refurbishment. You heard from Katie MacArthur earlier this morning on accessibility, and certainly from an accessible standpoint, there's not really any fully accessible pools available in the valley. And that moving forward at some point in that 20... When we reach that 2030, the municipality will need to consider how we are providing that service from an accessibility standpoint. Another thing that was mentioned by... To me by rec staff is the change rooms, and that really there's only one. The Kentville Outdoor Pool has a family change room, and that all other pools offer only gender-specific change rooms, which can be problematic when you're trying to offer swimming lessons for all ages. So our current aquatics program is operating out of the Waterville Youth Facility. So if you've never been in that building, it's... The pool is, again, quite old. It's a very unique partnership that we have with Waterville, as in it's a provincial-owned facility. We do contribute some for the annual operation and maintenance of it. But again, we're limited as far as our access because of the nature of the facility. That pool was basically built to the youth facility because it's their fire suppressing. It's their tank of water that gets used if there was ever a fire to operate their sprinkler system. So that's the only reason that there's a pool in that building. So with the limited use, this fall has been a really great year. I just got some updates yesterday on the aquatics program that's provided at Waterville. And just this fall, there's 102 classes, 303 participants. Aquafit participants, 119 participants with six classes per week. Sensory swims, four weeks with six participants each week. 54 private bookings and about 600 drop-in participants, as well as additional lane swims, et cetera. So even with the limited access that we have, it's very well-used. Other facility needs that were identified in the report include walking. So walking is always the number-one ask, especially in the winter, of course. We've got great trail system, but when it comes to wintertime, there's not as much option for that. Court sports were identified as, again, lacking access and needing more access for facilities. That includes things like basketball, volleyball, badminton, and of course, the most popular one right now being pickleball. General community space, as I mentioned, it's very frequent that we have community groups reaching out to us, asking about access to just space, whether it's for meetings or other things where they can meet. Recommendation from consultants is always co-location. So the consultants really said if you build a facility, do things together. So if you have an aquatic side, you know, there can be other programming going on at the same time, in the gymnasium, that type of thing, and it helps build a community center and provide activities for the whole family at one time. So why rec complex? Obviously, as you all know, this area of the province is lacking in facilities. So if you go, as we talked about last week, we're one of the largest areas in the province apart from HRM and SeberRM, and do not have access to such a facility. Provision of top-notch recreation services has a long list of benefits to a community. So I won't go into too much detail. I'm sure you're all aware that of the social benefits of having people remain active and connected to their community. It's been stated by our largest employers that this type of initiative would help attract and retain talent. So certainly, we know in our discussions with some of the largest employers that when they go look to recruit from other parts of Canada or further, that this is a question, like where can we... What sort of recreational services do you have in your area? And if this is lacking, it can be a decision point. Such a development also spurs economic growth. If you're familiar, just as an example, with the Picto Wellness Center, once that was built, there was a lot of additional economic development that happened right there in that business park area. So additional hotels, restaurants, et cetera. So future estimated timeline, so right from the get-go, it was always stated that this project, you know, if it proceeded, would be at a minimum of a seven-to-eight-year project. And I would say that, you know, to this point, we're still on that timeline. Public engagement would need to occur more if there's a decision to proceed. Municipal units' decisions, so we hope to have, again, this has been a phased approach. Obviously, we've had direction to proceed to the study, further study, and now we need to look at some of the next steps. So we're looking to have some decisions made early in the early part of 2025. If there is a decision to proceed, then obviously, then we start to look at, you know, it's land discussions, design, bid, build, design-build RFPs, depending on how that would be proceeded. Of course, that takes a little bit of time when you're talking about such a size facility. Then contracts would be awarded, and of course, construction would be a fairly long timeline due to the nature of the project. So again, we're actually, we're further than two years in now. We're about three to four years in. So again, just a reminder that we'll have further discussions on this later in our next meeting. But for now, if there's any questions, I'm certainly open.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the CAO? Counselor Sappington.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Forgive me, but I feel compelled to say something in regards to the swimming, only because I am a mom of three young kids, and I think that maybe people who don't have young children may not know this. So when you put the numbers up about the usage of the Waterville Facility and you say that it's well-used, I feel like we are missing explaining that not only is it well-used, but it's like the Hunger Games, trying to get your child into those swimming classes because in a matter of... I don't think I'm exaggerating when I say in a matter of 10 minutes, all spots are filled, if not sooner. I mean, if Sean was here, he would be able to explain that literally, as a mother, I set the time for, I believe it's nine in the morning typically, when it opens online. And if you have more than one child, if you have three children, you must have three separate windows open and hope like hell, especially if you have twins, that they get in the same class at the same time. And then, if you're lucky, you get the third child in, hopefully around the same morning time, so that your entire day is not lost in having three children, hopefully on the same day, get into swim classes. So I think that when you say that it's well-used, we are understating that not only is it well-used, but we are not able to provide the necessity of swim classes and sports for our youth, and not just our youth, but our community in general. Forgive me.
Good question. Good comments. Anyone else? Counselor Hiltz.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you. I know firsthand, I work at Kings Regional Rehab Center as well, and I know that lifeguards are an issue. It hasn't been spoken about here. So, you know, if you build it, they will come, not necessarily, because I think COVID didn't help anything when it came to people expired. The cost, I think the cost of the payment that lifeguards get is next to nothing. So I think that should be considered, too. And also, I think, like, how much life is left at Waterville? Like, what is the lifespan of a pool?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Hiltz, I mean, because it's a provincial-owned facility, I mean, that's a provincial decision as to whether or not they will refurbish it. You know, I would speculate a little bit that that facility is greatly underused, as you likely know. I would think that at some point, the province will make a decision as to whether or not they, you know, how they decide to proceed with that facility is probably up in the air. But definitely, the current life is, we've, you know, we've had to fund some, I would say, a bit more than maintenance, like there's been some pumps replaced and some, which, if we didn't do it, I don't think the province would have. The province probably would have let the tank of water sit there for their fire suppression and not, you know, circulated water the way that it is now.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. A quick question and maybe a couple of comments. Is that a ping-pong table down there at the bottom left-hand corner?
Absolutely.
I was gonna say I'm concerned about gymnasiums, but I didn't realize that they had a ping-pong table. That's good. That's good to know. I think a couple of things that we need to bear in mind. I think there's no question that a lot of people feel that we really need an indoor pool. There's... I'm sure that there's a lot of people that... I think the other thing that we need to keep in mind in this whole thing, too, which you didn't mention, Mr. Deputy CAO, is ice surface. I know that Kentville's going through a study right now about an ice surface, so I think we need to keep that in mind. And the one other suggestion I'll say is, unfortunately, they tell me that they're closing YMCA's all over the USA because people aren't attending them. And I noticed, and I know this firsthand, when we first opened the soccer dome in Kentville, because I used to walk there, we used to have 175 people bumping into each other. I still go walk there, and on an average now, it's only 30 to 40. So I know that walking facilities are certainly... And that's an excellent place to walk. It's warm, and you're walking on astrodurf. But those are just a couple of comments I'll make, but I am impressed that it's got a ping-pong table. I really am. Sure, Director Barrett is, too. Counselor Best.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. You talk about arenas. I can only tell you, in the western end of this county of Kings, 82 kids were down taking part in hockey this year. Acadia is down a lot, too. So I think there's less and less people playing that kind of sport right now than there was before. And price is everything. I mean, I think people can't afford ice. And we talk about, my suggestion, we talk about putting new arenas in, a couple ice surfaces. If that happens here in County Kings, we may as well close Kingston. We may as well close Canning. And I don't... I think Kingston and Canning, that's a big focus point. There's lots of ice still available. It might not be at five, six o'clock at night, but there's lots of ice, and you can't run a facility and have adults in there at six o'clock playing hockey. If we don't keep moving till 11 or 12, we're all going to be in trouble. So I really think that you should get a lot more homework done on this facility, especially the arena facility. I don't know much about the pool facility, but I can only tell you, back when I was involved with Appledome, we went to six different spots that had pools, and every one of them said, "You can have our pool," because the price of it is out of this world. So I think we need to get a little more information on this, especially the rinks, because it's... There's less and less people playing hockey. Ringette, high school girls, CK don't even have a team. They have a practice team now. We used to have always a team in 25 years. Ringette is growing a little bit, but modern hockey is going down in the County of Kings. And I'm very concerned if we put two ice surfaces in, we may as well close some rinks, and I don't feel that's good for our little communities. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so somebody like to move receipt of the report, please? Moved by Counselor Lutz, second by Counselor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion carried. Is there any other business that's to come forward to me, the whole? No? Okay, then we'll move on to public comment, period. But I don't see any member of the public here, so I guess we can move on to... Would somebody like to make a motion that we adjourn for lunch for a half an hour? Moved by Counselor Allen, second by Counselor Lutz. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried, so we'll be back by no later than 1:15.
Okay, we'll call the special council meeting to order. And I would declare that all members of council are here. So, uh... Uh, let's see. Approval of the agenda, I guess. If we have a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Packford, seconded by Counselor Gates. All those in favor, please press your button. Or against, I guess. Okay, motion carried. So we're back into our special council meeting. And if there's any member of council that feels that they have a conflict of interest, it would be appropriate to state it now. Nope? Okay. Administration, appeal of admin dash zero one dash zero one two policy for investigation and adjudication of complaints under the code of contract, code of conduct for elected officials. Okay. So moved by Counselor Lutz, seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? Okay, all those four are against, please press your button. All right. Motion approved. And now we'll get, go to number five, a recommendation from the Audit and Finance Committee, and which will be read and moved by Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, five A, that municipal council approved the March thirty first, two thousand twenty four consolidated financial statements as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four committee of the whole agenda. So moved.
Okay, and I need a seconder. Seconded by Counselor Lutz. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you for that. Oh, five B, that municipal council received for information the March thirty first, two thousand twenty four non-consolidated financial statements as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four committee of the whole agenda. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh, five C, that municipal council accepted general operating accountability report for period end at March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five D, that municipal council approved the transfer of two hundred and sixty five thousand three hundred and twenty four to the special project reserve, which is six one four four six oh three eight one, related to unspent funds from approved project budgets. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five E, that municipal council approved the transfer of twenty two thousand nine hundred and seventy six dollars to the municipal sewer operating reserve, six one four four six oh one three oh, relating to unspent funds from approved project twenty two three four oh six municipal specification manual update. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five F, that municipal council approved the two thousand twenty five twenty six budget timeline attached as appendix A to the December twelfth, two thousand twenty four request for decision. So moved.
Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five G, that municipal council received for information the March thirty first, two thousand twenty four non-consolidated financial statements as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four committee of the whole agenda. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. All right. Motion approved. And now we'll get, go to number five, a recommendation from the Audit and Finance Committee, and which will be read and moved by Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Oh, five A, that municipal council approved the March thirty first, two thousand twenty four consolidated financial statements as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four committee of the whole agenda. So moved.
Okay, and I need a seconder. Seconded by Counselor Lutz. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Yeah, thank you for that. Oh, five B, that municipal council received for information the March thirty first, two thousand twenty four non-consolidated financial statements as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four committee of the whole agenda. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh, five C, that municipal council accepted general operating accountability report for period end at March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five D, that municipal council approved the transfer of two hundred and sixty five thousand three hundred and twenty four to the special project reserve, which is six one four four six oh three eight one, related to unspent funds from approved project budgets. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Yeah, thank you for that. Oh, five E, that municipal council received for information the March thirty first, two thousand twenty four non-consolidated financial statements as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four committee of the whole agenda. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh, five C, that municipal council accepted general operating accountability report for period end at March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five D, that municipal council approved the two hundred and sixty five twenty six budget timeline attached as appendix A to the December twelfth, two thousand twenty four request for decision. So moved.
Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Yeah, thank you for that. Oh, five E, that municipal council received for information the March thirty first, two thousand twenty four non-consolidated financial statements as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four committee of the whole agenda. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh, five C, that municipal council accepted general operating accountability report for period end at March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Yeah, thank you for that. Oh, five E, that municipal council received for information the March thirty first, two thousand twenty four non-consolidated financial statements as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four committee of the whole agenda. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh, five C, that municipal council accepted general operating accountability report for period end at March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five D, that municipal council approved the transfer of two hundred and sixty five thousand three hundred and twenty four to the special project reserve, which is six one four four six oh one three oh, relating to unspent funds from approved project twenty two three four oh six municipal specification manual update. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh, five C, that municipal council accepted general operating accountability report for period end at March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five D, that municipal council approved the transfer of two hundred and sixty five thousand three hundred and twenty four to the special project reserve, which is six one four four six oh three eight one, related to unspent funds from approved project budgets. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Yeah, thank you for that. Oh, five E, that municipal council received for information the March thirty first, two thousand twenty four non-consolidated financial statements as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four committee of the whole agenda. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh, five C, that municipal council accepted general operating accountability report for period end at March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five E, that municipal council approved the transfer of twenty two thousand nine hundred and seventy six dollars to the municipal sewer operating reserve, six one four four six oh one three oh, relating to unspent funds from approved project twenty two three four oh six municipal specification manual update. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh, five C, that municipal council accepted general operating accountability report for period end at March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh, five C, that municipal council accepted general operating accountability report for period end at March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five D, that municipal council approved the transfer of two hundred and sixty five thousand three hundred and twenty four to the special project reserve, which is six one four four six oh three eight one, related to unspent funds from approved project budgets. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Yeah, thank you for that. Oh, five E, that municipal council received for information the March thirty first, two thousand twenty four non-consolidated financial statements as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four committee of the whole agenda. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five D, that municipal council approved the transfer of two hundred and sixty five thousand three hundred and twenty four to the special project reserve, which is six one four four six oh one three oh, relating to unspent funds from approved project twenty two three four oh six municipal specification manual update. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh, five C, that municipal council accepted general operating accountability report for period end at March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh, five C, that municipal council accepted general operating accountability report for period end at March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five D, that municipal council approved the transfer of two hundred and sixty five thousand three hundred and twenty four to the special project reserve, which is six one four four six oh three eight one, related to unspent funds from approved project budgets. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh, five E, that municipal council approved the transfer of twenty two thousand nine hundred and seventy six dollars to the municipal sewer operating reserve, six one four four six oh one three oh, relating to unspent funds from approved project twenty two three four oh six municipal specification manual update. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
I didn't realize there was so much work involved in this, Mr. Mayor. Oh, five F, that municipal council approved the two thousand twenty five twenty six budget timeline attached as appendix A to the December twelfth, two thousand twenty four request for decision. So moved.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for that. Oh five B, that municipal council received for information the March thirty first, two thousand twenty four non-consolidated financial statements as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand twenty four committee of the whole agenda. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor... Or Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Bless you. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And oh five C, that municipal council accept the general operating accountability report for period ended March thirty first, two thousand twenty four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh five D, that municipal council approved the transfer of two hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and twenty-four to the Special Project Reserve, which is six one four four six oh three eight one, related to unspent funds from approved project budgets. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
Oh five E, that municipal council approved the transfer of twenty-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars to the Municipal Sewer Operating Reserve, six one four four six oh one three oh, relating to unspent funds from approved project twenty-two three four oh six Municipal specification manual update. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion approved. Counselor McPherson.
I didn't realize there was so much work involved in this, Mr. Mayor.[804.21][804.21](Laughter). Oh five F, that municipal council approved the two thousand twenty-five twenty-six budget timeline attached as Appendix A to the December twelfth, two thousand twenty-four request for decision. So moved.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Hiltz. Any further discussion? Okay, all those approved or against, please press your button. Thank you. Motion approved. I don't know what you're complaining about, Counselor McPherson. Me and the other eight counselors have been doing all the work up to now.[851.41][851.41](Laughter).
Oh five G, that municipal council accept the general operating accountability report for period ended September thirty, two thousand twenty-four as an information item. So moved.
Seconded by Counselor Sappington. And any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. Okay, now we're on to six, number six. Um, and presentate... Proclamation request for African Heritage Month, two thousand and twenty-five. Whereas February is recognized internationally as African Heritage Month, a time to recognize and salute over four hundred years of contributions, culture, and achievements made by people of African descent, and whereas the municipality of the County of Kings is committed to the vision of being a community of communities where all peoples belong, and whereas within the municipality of the County of Kings borders two historic Black communities, Gibson Woods and Pine Woods, and whereas the province... Provincial theme for African Heritage Month, two thousand and twenty-five is Legacy in Action, celebrating Black brilliance, highlighting the living legacy of Black Nova Scotians, honoring the impact of preservance of the longstanding community, and whereas this year's theme aligns with the global observa... Observance... Observance, that was a tough one, of the decade of people of African descent, DPAD. And we are in the first year of Canada's four-year extension of DPAD. The goal of DA... DPAD, sorry, is to strengthen the global cooperation in support of people of African descent, increase awareness, and the passage towards the presence in all aspects of society, and therefore be it resolved that I, Mayor Corcom, on behalf of the council of the municipality of the County of Kings, do hereby proclaim the month of February two thousand and twenty-five as African Heritage Month in the municipality of the County of Kings. Signed on this, the first... Whoa, okay. Guess I'll be signing it before then. Uh, so I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counsel... Counselor Gates, seconded by Deputy Mayor Packford. So, any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion approved. Okay. It'll take me a little time to find this, uh... Business. Appendix A, is that... Is that the right one? That's business. I got family. I think I got this messed up here, Yanni. That's not, uh... I got family rate. Yes? I don't see it on the thing. I got, uh... It's on... It's on the screen? All right. All right. I was trying to read from this here, so we'll... Good. All right, so now we're into six B, Policy FIN dash zero five dash zero zero eight Business Expense Notice, that the municipal council provides seven days' notice per S dot four eight dash... Or not, semicolon, one Municipal Government Act to adopt amendments to the policy FIN dash zero five dash zero zero eight Business Expense as outlined in the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four request for decision. So I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Sappington, seconded by Counselor Harding. All those in favor or against, please press your button. You thought you had a tough job. Motion carried. Thank you. And now for Policy FIN dash zero five dash zero two zero Hospitality Notice. The municipal council... Municipal council provide seven days' notice per dash forty-eight one Municipal Government Act to adopt amendments to Policy FIN zero five dash zero two zero Hospitality as outlined in the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four request for a decision, please. Uh, so I need a mover and a seconder. Moved by Counselor Harding, seconded by Counselor Sappington. Uh, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. Okay, so now we're on to RFP twenty-one dash thirteen Screening Building Project Design dash Hansbordur and Alesford. That council approved additional fees for design and engineering upgrades for the screening building projects in Hansbordur and Alesford in the amount of fifty-five thousand one hundred and forty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents, including non-recoverable HST, and the fees for construction management service in the amount of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and six cents, including non-recoverable HST for CBCL Limited. And moved by Counselor McPherson, seconded by Counselor Gates. Uh, any further discussion? Nope? All right, then. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. The next one, Contract Award twenty-four dash forty Infrastructure Maintenance Services East. The municipal council award contract twenty-four dash forty Infrastructure Maintenance Services East to Gary Parker Excavation Limited at the unit rates identified in their October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four tender submission. We have a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Hiltz, seconded by Counselor Lutz. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. Now for number F, Contract Award twenty-four dash forty-one Infrastructure Maintenance Services West. The municipal council award twenty-four dash forty-one Infrastructure Maintenance Services West to Gary Parker Excavation Limited at the unit rates identified in their October twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-four tender submission. Have a mover? Moved by Deputy Mayor Packford, seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, motion carried. Now for two thousand twenty-four slash twenty-five Capital Investment Plan and Canada Community Building Fund allocation to villages. The municipal council approved the two thousand and twenty-four slash twenty-five five-year capital investment plan as derailed in Appendix Detailed... Not derailed, uh, as detailed in the Appendix B of the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four request for a decision. I have a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Counselor Sappington, seconded by Counselor Gates. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. And for number H, Our Joint Accessibility Plan Update. The municipal council approved the two thousand twenty-four twenty-five Canada Community Building Fund allocations and use... And use for village projects as detailed in the Appendix A of the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four request for a decision. Somebody move it, please. Counselor McPherson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Packford. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor or against, please press your button. Motion carried. I have no idea what Counselor McPherson was whining about earlier. Other business. Is there any other business come before council? What? H? Oh, I missed one? I thought that was the last one I just did. Oh, okay. All right, our... Okay, so that municipal government adopt our joint accessibility plan update for two thousand twenty-five twenty-eight as attached to the December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four request for decision. Moved by Counselor Sappington and seconded by Counselor Allen. Any further discussion? All those in favor or against, please press your button. Thank you. Motion carried. Now we'll move on to other business. I dare you.[1728.01][1728.01](Laughter). Okay, any other business coming before council? No? Good move. All right. Okay, comments from the public. Yanni, are you getting up there as the public?[1745.45][1745.45](Laughter). All right, just checking. Uh, all right, so now we'd like to have a motion, please, to move into a closed session, and we will not be returning to public session. Moved by Counselor Allen, seconded by Counselor Gates. All those in favor or against, please press your button. Okay, so, motion approved. So as I...